Why don't we get started? This is Thursday, July 28, 2016. The Situate Planning Board meeting. We have an agenda, and I have one proposed change to that agenda before we...
What's the change?
I'd like to move up at 9:30 at the start of the public... before the public meeting for the Common Driveway to discuss the scenic road violation for the same location. I'd like to address that first before we take up the...
That would go like at 9:25 or something?
Yeah, or we could do it at 9:30 and then move on.
Okay. So I'll move the agenda with that change.
A second?
I second that.
Oh, there's a favor?
Aye.
Okay. 7:30, we're here to discuss the preservation of the George Weatherby House for the mixed-use special permit for 50 Country Way. Are the proponents here? Gentlemen, good to see you again.
Good evening.
Can you introduce yourself again? Yep.
Right, Gregory Grant here, representing Green Bush LSC.
And Peter Jantel also representing Green Bush Station LSC.
Thank you. Okay, I think the order of the day was really a discussion about the review of the preservation of the George Weatherby House. You've had an opportunity to have it reviewed, and you've seen the report our independent engineers have produced. I wonder if you have any summary comments about that at this point before we get into any board discussion here?
Sure. I think the kind of important thing to take away from it is that it appeared to be occurring with the report that will measure structural engineers did for our team in terms of the description of the condition of the Weatherby House as well as the implications of moving, retrofitting, restoring the house to code standards today. I think that the simple conclusion has to do with changing the use from residential use now to a commercial use, which changes the requirements, the code requirements significantly for the gravity loads. Their analysis was that the existing house did not comply with the naked compliance of 40-pound live load to 100-pound live load.
So you didn't have any disagreements with the technical analysis or conclusions they've reached then? Okay. Is there somebody here from ODH?
Yeah, Colin Simpson.
Maybe we could hear from you. Come on up.
Thank you. Glad to answer any questions that you might have on the report.
Well, I think we've all had a chance to look at the report, and I'm going to let Laura have a discussion of this. But I think in general, the one thing I didn't see was sort of an overall conclusion from you, and I don't know if you were intending to reach an overall conclusion on the viability of restoring this facility as opposed to demolishing it.
Well, I think we laid out from a structural standpoint what the hurdles would be to retrofit the building on a new foundation and to, as a historic building, to try to reuse the existing upper floors in a historic manner. There'd be a lot of coordination with the town to limit the kind of live loads that could happen on those floors. So in terms of a conclusion, I think we just stated what the situation was, and other people with more vested interests would use those facts to come to whatever conclusions the board or the people, officials would want to. But from a technical standpoint, we laid out as much as we possibly could to say if you're going to upgrade to a business use, public use, 100 pounds per square foot on the first floor and 75 pounds per square foot of the upper floors without some sort of intervention by the town building officials limiting the live load populations somehow. That would be somewhat difficult.
Okay. Well, we'll be back to you. Let me turn it over to Laura first, get your sort of input on this.
Well, I talked to the other principal at the company who usually often comes to these meetings but wasn't available tonight, David O'Day, and from the conversation that we had, and you know, correct me if you disagree, but it sounded like this building does have some problems, but they're the typical problems of a building of this age, and they can be addressed. It's not going to be without any cost. There will be some costs associated with that, but it's not impossible to save this building, was the conclusion that I got from talking with them, because I also found the report somewhat inconclusive. But that was, you know, that was what I was told. It does have a higher load than residential use would, but, you know, and I say that without knowing what the actual costs of renovation would be. I mean, beams would have to be replaced, and, you know, a lot of work would have to be done, definitely. But it's not like the building is falling down. You know, it's not falling apart. There's also a lot of insect damage, and all of, you know, those beams would have to be sistered or, you know, repaired in some way. So, yeah.
Let's see if we have any other comments from the board members here.
Yep.
Yeah. At some point, it looks to me like the building could be saved. The question is, is it worth the effort to make, to actually do the saving of the building? And I guess I'd look to you guys to tell me that. In fact, it cost a couple of extra dollars.
A hundred thousand more would make the difference in the profit.
I look at it a little different.
Well, I look at it from the building. I'm not concerned with the dollars. That's not my business.
Yeah, yeah, but I think if we rebuild it, the changes that we're talking about, the gravity changes, are going to be in the floor loads, and those are going to be dictated by the uses. If we rebuild it, we can use truss joists and other structural elements that will allow us to integrate mechanical systems. The floors right now are three by six. I mean, that's kind of scary with a two-beat center. So trying to retrofit any kind of an air system for cooling or heating would just devastate the interior building. So from my perspective, we're going to have to rebuild the floors. We're going to have to leave, if we add in the constraints of lead paint to the interior, we're going to have to strip the whole interior. We have to take everything and start over again. Safe with the exterior, and the snow loads, the code requirements for snow loads, the roof does not, does not, was there a word? Doesn't stand up to the snow loads that require structure. And also, because we're moving it and changing use, we're going to have to comply to the wind and the seismic code restrictions with the new roof and the floors. So picture the new roof, the planes, hurricane ties kind of going from the top planes of the rafters down to the new foundations. In an old historic building, this starts to look like surgery as to doing a new one. And it seems to be that if we rebuilt it, following the restrictions or following the guidelines that the decision outlined, where we replicate, we go and we do an inventory exactly of the exterior elements that we imagine. I think in the end, we would wind up with a better building, and a building that would perform better, that would use and would last a lot longer. And so it seems to be it would cost less and give a better profit. So I think it's a, I think it's a, it would be a good decision to use that rebuilding exactly the Weatherby House so we can improve it.
You're getting more interested in the shell than I am the peanut. You know, it's your money figuring out how to do it. Can I do all of these things that you're talking about from the interior part of the structure?
Can we increase the live load of the first floor and the 75 on the second?
Figure out how you're doing your handling and your other mechanicals?
Well, we can't do it within the existing envelope or the existing floors. And the other, you know, we would have to add things for infrastructure that would kind of decimate what the interior would want, perhaps, you know, things that we don't want to do to the interior of the building. So it's, I think it would be an opportunity to build the building historically, and sort of it wouldn't be the original building, but in some ways it could be like the old axe, the old axe where you keep the handle and you keep changing it, but it's still the old axe. We're changing things. I personally don't know how many things would change on what we see now from the original building. I suspect the columns in the cul-de-sac front have been replaced, not the original columns, just judging by the slender dimension of the columns. They look like they got replaced at some point in time. So I would see it too as an opportunity to, since it's a historical provision, to replicate some details that perhaps weren't the original details and that have been changed and replicated in the 70s or 80s of the building. And I thought, too, we discussed, might be a really good opportunity, the stone foundation of the main building, absolutely beautiful stones. They were cut in these stones. And we thought, we wouldn't use those for the new foundation, but we could take them, harvest them, and use them up front. We've got a landscape plan going out to the street, and we've got some great things that we can make. I can see reusing those along a stone wall that wraps around, and also be from the original house, make a really beautiful landscape. It would be actually going to save parts of the house. I'd like to hear what everybody else says.
I'd like to go back and, I guess, where we have the non-summer, is that what's being proposed, is the type of thing that would be in the summer that you would prepare? Yes?
In the, what we looked at to evaluate that was the code requirements. You get quite a little bit of leeway as a historic structure, but any new elements that get introduced do have to meet the modern code. What we were intimating in our report was that the first floor would be brand-new, as would be the foundations, and they would be code-compliant and meet 100 pounds per square foot. If the upper levels could, depending on the exact use of the existing building, stored building, the upper levels wouldn't have any more capacity than they have without the kind of intervention that is being discussed here. However, there are provisions in the code that allow for limiting the live load strategies with the building official, for limiting the live load in historic structures, that would allow that firm to be reused at the lower live load capacity that it kind of has. So those are, and in terms of the exterior, we noted that you've got board sheathing rather than no modern plywood. The building would not be terribly stiff, so in order to move the building, you would want to put in a significant amount of lateral bracing on the inside just so that the plaster wouldn't completely come right off the walls when we try to pick the building up. It won't have the same kind of stiffness as a modern building. So we're advising people that if it's going to be moved, it would need some serious augmentation on the inside to keep it stiff. And we would ask that the windows be removed during that time, because they'll just break when they rack. So in terms of the roof, the roof as it is now bearing partially on the attic frame could take a uniform load, but we noted that the relocated building would be part of adjacent buildings, which would then cause snow valleys, which would then have to be, the existing building would have to be further reinforced to take the drifted snow loads that accumulate the valleys.
Speak to one point? And I think it's important that the idea that we can accept the lower live load on the second, third floor by restricting the uses, now, that was intended, I think mainly under the agreement, for, you have a beautiful structure, and you want to renovate it for a home, for residential use. That works, you know, you just make sure you don't have the dog that weighs over 100 pounds. The loads that we're going to have, we have an office use, we have offices on the second floor, we have a small number of residential units, but the... Building inspectors that I've talked to have said that it'd be really hard to restrict the loading on the top floors if you have an office use. Maybe to do it for the design point, but then after that, who's to say that, you know, that they can't have books, or they can't have cloud cabinets, they can't have storage, things that require heavier commercial loading? So it seems like if you restricted the use on the second, upper two floors to residential ones, kind of a new scope for the building, which doesn't seem, it's not where we came in.
It's not where we want to be.
I don't think so.
No, because you could have done that real easy. I'm all set for one.
Okay.
Well, I'll just make a comment. I know that a lot of the historic preservation that's going on in Boston right now, like if you're familiar with the Bull Finch Building that was down at, used to be the littlest bar, which is changing now to residential, and they basically were going to save the structure, and really they just saved the facade, because again, the uses are changing, and it's hard for, I think, them to meet the code requirements. I see that happening multiple times, so I understand, you know, where you're coming from. I'm all about historic preservation, but at a certain point, as you said, you know, you can restore anything, literally anything. All it takes is money and time. So that's what I was hoping, the summary was kind of going to tell me like, well, at some point, here are the scales, and the preservation doesn't make sense with the money involved. So that's kind of where I'm trying to look at this, is, you know, I want to preserve the building, but if it doesn't make sense, if we're going to be spending, you know, hundreds of thousands more than anticipated, and you're not going to get the use out of it, then that doesn't make sense to me. So I don't know if there's, that's probably not where the summary was leading, but I think that's where the board, that's kind of where we were leaning toward, I think, in trying to find that balance, basically.
I think that the structural reports were just fine. What they were asked to do, they did, is analyze the structural capacity of the building. They weren't asked to put a cost estimate on whatever the uses are that we won't be planning. So I don't think we can look to either of the structural reports to tell us if it's feasible or not. The feasibility comes into what it's going to cost from our perspective to retrofit the building, to rebuild the building, to meet the code for the uses that they're projecting.
Now, so my question back, assuming that this is a new building then, I know you've taught, you've been before us before, and you've said that you can replicate the historic structure as much as possible. I mean, how close do you think that can really be with the modern materials and with the modular construction that's being proposed?
Yeah, it's really a simple building, which is part of its elegance. It's a simple gable roof. The windows are going to be new windows, but the, I don't know, the windows that are there now, I don't know how close they were to the original windows, because they're millions between their own veins, and they didn't spot that. As I said, I don't think the columns are the original columns, so I think clavwards are clavwards, you know, cables are cables. I think the simple shape gets retained, and we have to rebuild it, even if we're starting the building. So what we're going to be looking at is going to be new skin, new windows, new elements, new shingles. So I think it's, I think we wind up visually from the outside the same whichever path we take, rebuild or try to restore. The restoration is really tough inside when you try to make it.
Now, since, and I can understand this where you're changing the uses, is there any possibility to save the structure in the sense of to say to someone, all right, we can move it for, let's say, a residential use? Like move, you know, someone purchase it for the...
Move it elsewhere.
Yeah. Like what's being done, I mean, right now, when I drove by, it's sort of split in half because the barn part of it is eventually going to be moved, or the plan is to move it to Ford Place. So could it potentially be moved for a residential structure? I know it's...
If someone wanted to take on the responsibility.
Yeah, that's the whole, yeah.
We're kind of in a different, just to address that a little bit, I think we're in a little different place in that this was the primary public benefit that came through this approval. And to the extent that it goes off somewhere else and somebody else does or doesn't do it, it doesn't deliver sort of the public benefit that we've talked about. But the other balancing issue is how feasible is it to restore this, you know, historic home to be functionally useful, right? I think that's what we're sort of struggling with now.
Exactly.
I'm not sure that if somebody were to buy it and take it off-site, and, I mean, it'd be great if somebody could do that, but I still think it raises the question of what, what's sort of the replacement public benefit for this project here? I think we still need to address that if we were to go down that road, but I don't want to presuppose that. I guess I want to have everybody have their says. I just wanted to mention that about that.
Yeah, that's a very valid point.
I think that it was always intended to be a different use, a mixed use in terms of the problem of retail. Prescriptive, had parts of the decision that said how much, how many square feet we needed on the ground floor, on the retail, the mixed use, retail versus office versus other uses, and the mixed use part, I think would have made benefits for the site. And bringing it out to the front and keeping it exactly the same as the existing historic house, kind of puts a historic face on the whole project, and the buildings that build from it, they have the recall of that building. So I think that's, the fact that it's being kept is important. I would say if we rebuilt it, or call it if we reshingle or reclavward windows, roof, gable, columns, somebody came back to town a year later and thought, wow, that would have sprayed that.
Reggie, you have any questions? I know you walked in late, so...
I think, yeah, I'm late to the party, but, no, you've already touched on what I would have asked about, the feasibility of saving it versus not financially.
I was not here on the board when 50 Country Way started, and I understand you about the public benefit. And I guess the public benefit, as has been pointed out, is theoretically saving this historic building. If it were going to be a museum, I could certainly understand fixing the inside of it, but in reality, the public's not going to be in there, other than retail, which they will outfit however they want their space to look, and then offices on the second floor.
I think we understood that when we approved it, right?
Right. Okay.
I think what I'm hearing here is that, not that we're taking the old axe and putting a new handle on it, is that we're buying a brand-new axe, right? And we're trying to make it look like the old axe. That's really what's being proposed here, which is, I mean, I understand that. I think that, but I think that's what you're proposing, right? Is that you would build a new structure here. You're not saving the facade and somehow plugging it into this brand-new structure, right?
Yeah, usually when you're dealing with a historic building and you're restoring it, and you're deeming parts that were saving and replacing, you look at the building with the clear set of glasses on it. There's nothing different about that building than the one down the road, down the road. The clavwards, the shape, the windows, and the porch are all things that are pretty straightforward architecturally and have been replaced over the years, so they're not, it's not as if we've got historic records, 200 years old, unsaved, things that have a patina of age that are important to save. So it's, from my point of view, I think it's difficult to see anything going key structurally.
I hear you saying that, right? But that was not the story that was said during the permitting of this. It was important to save, and it was impressed upon us that that was an important public benefit. Which is why it's in there at all, and why we were insistent upon really evaluating this very carefully, to make sure we knew what the options were and what the implications of those options were. So I think after the fact, changing the perception is not really what we're talking about here. We're talking about kind of what we heard when we, and what we were told when we approved this, and trying to find out how we address this particular situation now.
I don't have a photograph in front of me, unfortunately. Are there corner boards on the present building right now? I'm just trying to think of like detail that could potentially be lost with a new structure.
Well, I think that would be incumbent upon us to have to recreate the detail.
Quite nice, you know, highlights.
Yeah, that's what, exactly, that's what I was thinking. Those are the things that are hard to replicate in a current, with the current, yeah, thank you.
I don't think they're that difficult.
Well, I mean, these are the kind of details, these things that I'm, the corner boards, the eaves, structure, that's the kind of thing, I think, the detail would matter. Yeah, I'm sorry. There's a question?
Well, hold on a second here. So I just want to be clear... Um, so I just, I just want to be clear how we got to this point, okay? And before I turn it back to the public here, I'll make sure we got all our comments from the board here.
I can, excuse me, Reggie. You were going to say something? Um, may I first?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, thank you. Why can't the shell of it be saved? Why can't it...
Let's ask our...
Right, why can't the shell be saved? And then whatever you do inside to shore the thing up, to make it work, but the outside is saved. You, basically, you sort of kind of take it apart like a jigsaw puzzle. You lift it up, you pull it forward, and then you put it back together again. And whatever you do inside, because you can't see that from the outside, and replace the roof, as long as it all looks the same visually from the outside. And as Bill said, you've got the shell and you get rid of the peanut. He's right.
I, I think that's a, a good idea. I think we could inspect the, the corner boards, the pilasters, the black end pieces and, and make sure that they're not rotten and, you know, have to be replaced anyway. But they could easily be, instead of demoed and tossed, they could be stripped and cataloged and put back onto a new box. New clavwards for sure, but that's okay. Those are, you know, those anyway, I would think. So the answer is yes, I think that would. And that would give a, a kind of, some integrity to the restoration idea, that it is the way that we can house, in a good degree.
And again, I think that's essentially what I was, the example I was using for the Bull Finch Building that's down on Broad Street. If you look at that now, I mean, there's literally nothing behind it. It's all just brick facade that they've kept because it's a very historic, historic brick. But in this case, you could keep, like you said, the corner boards, the front facade as much as possible.
When you look at the, the, um, new elevations against the building that exists now, it is a bit different because the roof is, is higher. It, it appears to be anyway on, on the elevation. And you've got the two dormers coming out that you don't have on the, on the, let me just, let me just, I'm, I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to explain. So the proportions are, you know, appear to be a bit different between, you know, the, the third floor, which is a full third floor in the new design, and in the existing house, there really isn't a third floor there. There's, or at least it doesn't appear to be. There's no, uh, there are no dormers, there's just maybe a half a floor if you count the space in the attic, which you could stand up in.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it really does, um, change the whole, um, configuration of the space in that building. And by doing that, it changes the way the building looks a bit. Um, I mean, the, the building now is very simple and kind of almost plain in a way, and it would be sort of a little bit dressed up with these additional dormers, the additional space. It might be a lot more functional, but I think that's a whole side issue from what the planning board talked about.
I have no idea where the dormers came from. I mean, they were on the set that was approved, they're not on the original building. So somehow they became part of the design that was done by the board team.
Yeah.
And, and they were deemed, you know, appropriate.
Okay, well, they're on your plans.
No, I just...
Yeah, so, okay, but you're talking about how they developed and got there.
Yeah, our, our plan was taking, we inherited the board plan that was approved, and so our, our effort in planning interior and exterior was to keep that on board, you know, so we kept the dormers.
Yeah.
Um, let me see if we've got questions for the public. I know, I know Chris is here and he would like to say something, so you've got the floor.
Okay, uh, I probably remember as much about all of this as anyone else.
Just state your name for the record.
Chris Ford, former owner of the property. I begin my conversation by rolling back to when we bought it almost 20 years ago, and we had an inspection done, as most buyers would do, and the inspector recommended he really should tear this building down. Okay? And we said, well, you know, that's not our plan, you know, and, you know, we're going to try and make it work. In the course of ownership, you know, those columns out front, are they, are they original or not? They're, they're plastic. We, we changed them all. They were rotting. And, and so there's, there's nothing to say. Those are plastic poles, we brought them in England. Every window in the building is a Haby window, okay? You know what Haby windows are? The warehouse in Grand Prix? There's nothing historic there, I think, I think, and so when the plan was done and right before design review, some of those dormers evolved out of design review saying, you know, gee, could you do this, could you do that? And those elements got sort of built in. Now, the matter of a public benefit, there were two public benefits. We were going to try to save the main building. The other public benefit was constructing the pathway. Now, that's no small thing. It's turned out to be, you know, it's expensive project, you're purchasing easement from the T, you, it's, it's, it's a big deal, that public benefit. So to say that, you know, the public benefit is missing, a portion of it. But the other side of the equation is, we're saving the barn. Now, in many ways, the barn has more structural appeal, visual appeal than the main building. It hasn't been as tampered with visually on the outside quite as much. And, and that was going to be demolished, now it's going to be saved. So the public benefit lives, it's moving over to, uh, you know, replace, you know, the post office. So we, I think we knew all along, you know, we said, we're going to try and save that building if we can, but all along we said, and if we can't, you know, uh, we're going to replicate it. And that is what you got. And no one's sort of turning the story around. We tried so hard.
I would interrupt you with that, and I don't think anybody ever said, there's nothing historic about this, this property, which you just said. And that never came up during our conversations. So I would say that's not the case.
Well, I'm saying a lot of these, a lot of these elements, that you even questioned.
Fine.
I'm saying, yes, right.
Fine, but it's, you know, the, the conversation we got into it was, it was a historic building, it was part of the public benefit, you were going to attempt to save it. So to say now that, oh, it's not really worth saving because, you know, it's got different elements in it.
I didn't know that was, I didn't see these reports, but now that the...
No, I'm not talking about the reports, I'm talking about the elements of the house itself. If you're saying that, oh, the, the whole house is no longer historic, well, that's a different story than, than we had at the original approval. And I'm, I'm thinking that's not what you're saying. I'm hoping that's not what you're saying.
No, of course not. You saw the sign, the...
Okay, thank you.
But you were questioning many of the elements of the house, and they have been changed. I mean, they are plastic pillars and metal and plastic windows and, uh, so, uh, you know, and we had to do that. A big issue for us was lead paint, and it's still an issue in that building. And we, we, we were trying to remediate wet, wet, lead paint, and that's why we had to do things like the replaced pillars. And then we finally gave up inside the house because we're just beyond our capability to do that, so we had to restrict, you know, any kind of residential use of children to the other side, which had been internally, uh, totally rebuilt back in the nineties. So, but, uh, we discovered a lot of this ourselves as we went along and, and got into the property. So, but we always recognized it as, you know, visually beautiful, and that's why we said, we want to replicate it when we designed a new building, because we love the look of it. And that's, and that's why the architects would have came along to sort of do it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the public? Okay. Um, I'll give you my sort of summary on this, at least if I, I've heard it, and then we can...
Summary would be good.
Um, first off, I would say my take on O'Day's report is that although they didn't say it, what they're actually saying is that this is a very difficult building to maintain, to keep, to try to reuse. The notion of occupational control seems to me to be, uh, um, uh, an approach that is not necessarily a viable approach, even if the code allows for it. It seems like it'd be very difficult to maintain. The notion that it has to be redesigned, redesigned to, to handle seismic loads, um, uh, you know, I, I just don't see that that's worth the investment. Um, you know, the notion that, um, it doesn't meet the current snow loading requirements. I think all of those, sort of as I, as I read these one after the other, it just sort of pancaked on top of each other and, and sort of my conclusion was that, um, was that that this is a very difficult building and is probably not worth saving as a whole. The question of whether the facade could be saved or replicated is still, I think, very much an issue and one that we would want to see happen. Um, I do think that there's, uh, an issue of sort of the, the public benefits that came along with this that we need to address. Um, and, you know, if there's a proposal that you have for sort of redoing this, I guess, I guess my suggestion is I'd like, I'd like to hear what that proposal is. And, um, it seems like it could include things like, uh, a landscaping plan that reintroduces some of these building materials, these stone found, these stones from the foundation, um, preserves the, uh, the architectural elements, um, of the facade itself. Um, but that's, that's sort of where I'm falling out on it, just, just from reading everything and hearing everybody, uh, talk about it, so, I mean, that's...
Yeah, from my perspective, I think as an architect and also as someone that's really concerned about the green bush, um, visually, how it all looks, right? The whole area. The fact that it's a village district and that we want to have, um, um, high-quality materials and details, right? And so it's, I, to me, it all comes down to the details. And if we can accurately replicate or reuse the existing corner boards and some of the trim materials, then I would be happy with that, understanding the report, how difficult that was, it is, and the change in use from a residential to a commercial retail. But I, I agree with your idea of coming back with maybe some ideas of reusing some of the materials, the stonework.
Well, they've offered that up, so...
What about the dormers? Do, the plan that they received from board showed dormers on this building as opposed to, you know, if you're talking about historic preservation, the building itself never had dormers.
Right.
So what are we talking about here? Are we going to put, allow dormers? Or are we going to keep this particular building, which is going to be moved, I understand, toward the street, landscaped, et cetera, with the porch? Are there going to be dormers? And do we want dormers? Do we want the building to look the way it looks now?
I think we want that, that front look to be consistent with a lot of the other sort of businesses along, they're relatively simple like this as you go down the row, right?
Right.
Um, my guess is, or my, my expectation would be that we try to replicate what's there, if that's what we intended, right? And if it didn't have dormers, it doesn't have dormers.
Right, then it shouldn't have dormers.
But I would say we would have to look to these gentlemen to come back with the plan that says, this is how we're going to do it.
Yeah, and I don't recall, I guess the design review committee made some suggestions as to the dormers. I actually don't recall how those appeared either.
Well, my, my expectation was that we would get them to develop a plan, we would send it back to the design review committee to make sure that merges with historic preservation and hopefully get everybody on the same page, right?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll go out on a limb here that might be controversial, but for me, since we're not really preserving the house as it was said, if it was a museum or if it's a residential house, if we try to preserve it exactly the same, that, that's great. Since we're preserving just some elements and we're basically rebuilding the structure from the, uh, the ground up, it's more important to me that the, I don't know how to describe this, the historical feeling or ideas are met, like the gables, the materials, the details, and it doesn't necessarily, to me anyway, have to be identical. That's my opinion.
Okay. It's going to be just alike, only different.
Well, well, what I'm saying is, you know, we're not going to be using...
You've got to start somewhere.
We're not going to be using chain link fence and vinyl siding.
No.
As an example, right?
The intent was to come back up and preserve the building. Now I'm looking to preserve a replication, and now I'm re-engineering the replication.
Well, you're right, we've kind of gone off on a little bit of a tangent there, but...
I'm running out of limits.
If we have decided that it's not feasible, which I think we're coming to that conclusion, to, to preserve it, um, as is, then that maybe gives them a little bit more flexibility to have the, the intent be correctly stated, but not be identical. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I think a starting point could be the intent, it could be the identical, and if there's a deviation from that, I guess I'd like to know why, right? I mean, I, I don't see why we can't replicate it, you know? The look of it, why, why do we need to add dormers? Why do we need to, I mean, what if they ended, ended up changing the roof pitch by, you know, 10 feet? Is that okay? Um, you know, I don't know, right? So it seems to me you start with a baseline, which is, this was the building we were expecting to get, right?
But now, if we're sort of redefining the problem, there might be a better solution than trying to replicate it exactly, because we now...
I'd like to hear what that is, right? I would say the objective should be to replicate it, and if you need to change it, tell us why.
Okay, well, that's what I was saying, is that I'm going to be to the factor of, or at least in my opinion, you want the design intent and the materials and the details to be as accurate as possible, but it doesn't have to be, look exact, in my opinion, it doesn't have to be exactly the same. That's where I'm standing. Everyone can have a different opinion, but I'm more on the like of, now we have the chance to like redesign this or make a better overall holistically developed project, so that all fits together better. Maybe that's a, maybe dormers will, maybe dormers won't, I don't know. I don't want to comment.
Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to avoid is, is shooting at a moving target here, right? So it's sort of hard to say, well, it's kind of like this, but I'll know when I see it.
Right.
Uh, it's, it's more to say, if we have, if we have a benchmark that says, can we replicate? And if they have proposals to change it, to improve it, I think we could hear that out, right?
Yes.
That, that would just be, we, we need to start some, we need to have something to shoot at, I guess.
I, I think that the dormers are kind of a, a little bit of an oddball feature because they seem like they're a minor thing, but I think when you look at the building and you think about the context of what styles were like historically, they just didn't use dormers in roofs like that. So I think if you're trying to maintain the history of this area, which I think was what you all wanted.
Yes.
Then I think you have to be really careful with the details.
Mm-hmm. I think you're right. I would agree with that.
I agree. And how did they ever appear on the plan?
I don't know.
I really have to make a comment, if you don't mind, Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Because we went through design review, three different processes. We had, we had, we spent five years on this project. We had, we had another buyer back in 2006, and they came in with a design which you did not like. And you sent us back, and this gradually evolved, the dormers evolved. It's a function of the economics of the project. You take away dormers today, it changes the entire project. It's going to eliminate units, it's going to eliminate space, but this is a, uh, this evolved over time. And so the dormers ended up on the antique house out front. That was a function of creating space up there that would meld with the rest of the building. And design review worked with us on this concept of dormers. And so, I mean, you have a committee you rely on, and we followed their guidance in this project, to kind of tell these gentlemen at this point that, well, you know, we think you've got to eliminate all your dormers. I mean, that's not what they want. They want for me a project fully approved with designs and everything else and, uh...
Well, they can, they can restore the building if they like.
Are you moving down the direction of no dormers? Are you talking about no dormers and the rest of the building? Maybe I'm, maybe I was concerned.
No, we're not talking about, that's, that's not part of the discussion. The discussion is about the historic building.
Right.
Right? And what we're, what we're using as a benchmark for reconstructing what is no longer going to be saved.
But we have to alter the historic building and the roof lines and all of that.
And that's, that could be a question.
And that's, that's kind of where that evolved. That's where the dormers came from, to delete the concerns of the design review to get some human quality and to have livable space up there, otherwise it would affect space.
Thank you. Did we have design review here?
Yeah, you are. Um, Hal Stokes, the chairman of the design review committee and...
Um, Hal Stokes, the chairman of the design review, uh, committee, and I was acting chair at the time, uh, and I dug out my memo from, from that, that period. And we did, I don't know where the idea exactly came from, but we, we did say right in the memo, uh, the addition of dormers to the front of the historic building was considered appropriate to the era and the style of the building. So that's obviously how they ended up on the plans. And I don't know if there are any other elements of this memo that are, that are made, but you know, I'm sure you have access to, to probably consider it.
The, um, so we're at, we're at a different stage now though, right? We're at a place where there is nothing that's going to be saved, right?
Right.
It's gonna be replicated.
Right.
So, the question is, what does the replication look like?
Indeed.
And I, I would be happy to turn that conversation over the design review board and the proponents to figure that out, um, but we need something for them to shoot at.
Right. I think we'd be happy to look at it again. I mean, as I recall, the other large buildings, uh, that are, the new construction, they did, there were plenty of dormers there, right? Yeah.
So, I don't think we were suggesting changing the rest of the building.
Understood, but I, I guess we...
This particular element, right?
We looked at it as a common element that, uh, worked, but, uh, yeah, we would definitely look at it.
Well, and to play devil's advocate, um, let's say that they could preserve the building, right? And there was no issues whatsoever, it was really easy-peasy, they wouldn't really even be before us, and they have the permits to change the roof line and add the dormers. So, as Mr. Ford said, I mean, that's our...
But, but, but you'd have to, you'd have to really play around with that roof. I mean, you wouldn't have the old building anymore once you did that.
But I guess, isn't that, my point is, that is what's approved though, correct?
Nothing's really quite approved because it's, you know, the decision is still in process, really.
But...
Something was approved, but there were, there were contingencies.
Right.
The contingency was to look at whether or not they could move this building very, very closely. And if they couldn't, what was supposed to happen was they were supposed to provide a new elevation, and then the planning board was supposed to have a historic preservation consultant review that and determine whether it was really historically appropriate.
But...
It didn't say anything about the design review committee or, you know, uh, someone from the applicant's team making the decision or someone from the plant, I mean, I mean, that's the way it was laid out.
But, let's say that it was a easy to move the building and...
Okay, well, I, yeah, but it's not.
Crossed the Rubicon on that one, though, right? So...
I guess what I'm trying to figure out here though is, well, there were, in the approved plans and elevations, there were the dormers. So they would have been able to do that if it was, you know, I guess I'm trying to like...
I'm happy to leave it as, as Laura just suggested. They could present a new proposal, we can have a historic, you know...
Yeah, I guess, so that's, we're at that, that, that stage right now.
We could, we could resolve it that way, right? Um, I mean, either way is okay with me.
That is what you agreed to, so...
What's the, what would you propose we do?
So, what I'm hearing is that the applicant would come back with new, um, elevations and plans that we would review, or then the design review committee would take a look at. So we're here...
Well, that's where I originally proposed. Laura suggested a historic preservation consultant. I'm not sure if we can sort of merge that all together and...
I think that was from the original, um, yeah, uh, let's see.
I think you referred to consultants.
The alternative design, okay, uh, you know, if, if the house cannot be moved without significant damage, an alternative design for building A shall be submitted to the planning board. This design shall include a facade similar to that of the Weddaby House. This alternative design shall be reviewed by a historic preservation consultant who shall report to the planning board on the appropriateness of the proposed facade relative to the size, design, character, and historic period of the building it was intended to replace. The new facade shall be approved by the planning board prior to the pre-construction conference.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Sounds like we have a game plan. I mean, the, the one thing I would, I would suggest we try to find a way to work with this, instead of having somebody throw a design over the wall and we throw comments back and forth, if we could make it all, if they could all coordinate at the same time and come back in with something that our consultant has already reviewed. And it just seems like we don't want to keep going back and forth on this.
I think there are people who would work with their architect and not, you know, waste any of their time.
Okay. Okay, so...
And I think that we would be looking for reusing some of the design elements as you suggested, the stone walls, um, potentially, like I keep saying, the corner boards and maybe the trim, and some, some design elements.
Uh, I just have one more comment to Mr. Sandell. Looking at this picture, and maybe it's because of replacing rotten holes, could you please center it?
Center which part?
So that the door is centered under the middle window.
I mean, the main...
The main door.
The entry door.
And then the, the pillars...
Right.
Are offset. They are, it's not...
I thought with a pillar in the middle of the door kind of thing?
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Unless, of course, that's not historic.
Is that, I mean, seriously?
Precisely, no, that's not the way it was.
That's not the way it was.
No, I mean, the way it's sitting right here, you're saying, that, I have no drawings of the, of an archaic original design, archaic.
Well, but when you have a pole right in the middle of the window, and then you have another one in between a window and the door...
Yep. So do you, do you have an app in your architecture?
Somebody would go crazy looking at that pole all the time.
So, um, I, I just, I don't, I don't want to belabor it. I think, I think Anne's made her point. It sounds like we have, have a path forward, and do we need a motion to do that, or, I think it's just a direction, right?
Yeah.
At this point, right?
Yep.
So, what we need from you is, is the new proposal, the proposed elevation.
Mm-hmm.
And I would say work with Laura to identify who from, uh, historical preservation consultant would do.
Historical as well as Mr. Stokes' design review.
Well, it didn't say anything in here about design review, but if you want to involve the design review again, you know, that's really up to you.
Well, they've looked at the first piece, so I would say, let's just make sure everybody's talking, right?
Yep.
I think it'd be helpful to at least have them review it.
Yeah. Well, they, uh, they did the first review, so...
Right.
But let's try to do it efficiently so everybody's, you know, by the time it comes back here or everybody's seen it and, and they've made whatever changes might be necessary. Does that work for you?
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Then I think we're done for the moment.
That's good.
Thank you. One other thing that, that Richard did mention was, you'd mentioned reuse of some of the materials, particularly the stone, stones from the foundation, so I think you should bring that back at the same time, is kind of how you would...
We'll do a hardscape, yeah, hardscape layout.
The, the site plan that Mr. Morse did shows an extension up to the street of a raised development and shows a retaining wall. That'd be perfect, there's beautiful old stones.
Okay.
Oh, this is going on this project, I know.
Yeah, if we can see that along with the facade, that'd be good then.
I've had it two years, it's been a long time.
Thank you.
So I'm new to the game. I was here...
Before we close this...
The first time since I've been on a planning board, the number of architects have outnumbered the number of lawyers and engineers.
Yay.
Yeah. This is Laura's.
I won't ask if that's a good thing.
I didn't say with progress or...
It's just an observation. One of life's curiosities. It's a good year and a half. Okay.
Because about a month ago, they said they were gonna, the bomb was moving and they were gonna try to save the house. Now they're saying the house can't be saved.
We have the public hearing for the site plan administrative review, uh, for the proposed microbrewery at Six Old Country Way.
It happens when you're agreeing on it.
That's all I'm saying, I'm just sympathetic.
Okay, gentlemen, can you identify yourself?
Sure. Uh, good evening, my name's Frank Colepoys, I'm an attorney for President of Citrus, Officer Marshfield, and we're representing Whitecrest Realty LLC, who's the petitioner on this project. And, uh, I can introduce people if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Chuck Fagan, Charles Fagan, that's my property.
Greg Morse, Morse section hearing.
We've seen you before.
Matt Elder, owner of Untold Brewery, the proposed tenant.
Alan Lowry, designing and construction consultant.
Great.
I'm just gonna be very brief, and I'm gonna turn over the technical guys here.
Laura's yours.
That's what we want to hear. Uh, we're here tonight, obviously, for a site plan administrative review under zoning bylaws, section 770. And just by way of background, uh, the, the site that we're talking about here is in the general business zone, and it's part of the Green Bush Overlay District. And, um, the, the specific purpose of the Overlay District is to quote, "Provide opportunities for local, small, scaled businesses." That's exactly what we're here in front of you folks and have been in front of the other boards of the town so far. The zoning change took place in November of 2015 at a special town meeting, and the town unanimously voted to allow a microbrewery in this section by special permit. And, um, by background, we were in front of the ZBA a week ago, and we did receive that evening unanimous vote to approve the special use, special permit for the microbrewery. Uh, we've also, by way of background, appeared before the, uh, design review board a few weeks ago, and, uh, the project is also gone before the Citrus Historical Commission with respect to the building that's there right now, and we did receive a permit to raise that building. However, uh, Mr. Fagan has made an agreement within a butter, and that building is actually gonna be preserved and relocated. And, uh, also, just one other aspect, and then I'm gonna turn right over to Greg, is there were also been arrangements to have the historic schoolhouse, which dates back to the 1800s, which is on Fitzmill property, moved over to this project also, and Greg will explain how that's going to be, uh, planned, or Alan will do that too. So we think we're gonna present for you a tract of a functional building that meets the criteria of the tenant and of the landlord. So I'm gonna turn right over to Greg to just go through the details.
Thank you.
The site is referenced, this is located at Six Old Country Way. For reference on the plan, Old Country Way is at the bottom of the plan. Our property line is shown in bold. Right now, existing at the property, there's a single-family residence, uh, right here, located centrally on the lot. The lot's 20,005 square feet, it's entirely upland area. There were no wetlands, there were no floodplains, there were no vernal pools associated with this project. Topography is generally flat. It does slope in a very slight direction toward Old Country Way. We're at elevation 28 in the backyard. Old Country Way, elevation 27, um, you know, again, very flat. We have very sandy soil out here. Old Country Way is a public road, uh, two-way traffic on Old Country Way. The proposed site plan is to remove that existing house. Arrangements are being made to locate it to another property in the Green Bush neighborhood, and to replace it with this new building. The new building is essentially made up of two parts. There's a brewery building, 42 feet wide by 100 feet long. This is where the beer would be brewed, uh, in the manufacturing essentially, and the bottling would be happening. And then the front building, which is approximately 35 feet by 25 feet, this is a wood-framed building in the front. This is the old schoolhouse building. Uh, as you're pulling into the Fitzmill property, it's been formally used as a, like a hay barn, it's on the left-hand side. So that would be attached to the front of the property, so that's what you would see from the street view. Parking would be along the northern side, we're providing a new parking access with two-way access, total of 17 parking spaces along the side of the building with two in the rear of the building. The building would have a garage door in the back for access in and out of the brewery. That's where we would have van access or, uh, box truck access for any of the deliveries or shipments leave over the site. Handicap parking is located centrally in the parking lot, associated striping and grading depicting that we have ADA compliance for access onto the property. On the southern side of the, uh, front building, we have a proposed brick patio. This would be a, an outdoor seating area where we would have seating. Patrons would be coming to this, not as a food establishment, but as a beer tasting venue. So there would be a tap room, uh, there would be public restaurants in the facility and outdoor seating associated with that on the brick patio area. That patio attaches to a vestibule area and to a walkway along the front of that building out to and connecting to the existing sidewalk on Old Country Way. Flipping to page four is our grading and utility sheet. The project is serviced by municipal water service connection, municipal sewer connection. We've met with the DPW and discussed the sewer connection. We're gonna be providing a pretreatment unit for the effluent coming out of the brewery facility, um, so that it is in conformance with, uh, pH levels and temperature levels for the sewer department. We've proposed a drainage system for the parking lot area. The parking drainage system is a so, is essentially the same as what we had designed at the 50 Country Way project. This property is in the Water Resource Protection District, and as such, what we needed to do is we needed to design a system that would be, um, enhanced with respect to nitrogen removal. What we've done is we've utilized tree box filters and then a subsurface infiltration system, so we're treating all the water through these Filterra tree box filters, um, and then recharging it subsurface because of the sandy soil conditions. We did receive the review letter from Merrill Associates. We've responded with a review letter today. The comments that were in the Merrill review, I see Mr. Palmeri in the audience, they don't know if he's reviewed our response yet, but he was looking for some additional details regarding our site lighting. We've provided those details with our revised letter, specing out the use of wall pack lights along certain pieces of the building, uh, and exterior lamps. We've made some revisions to the entranceway specifying a little bit more detail that the existing driveway for the house would be abandoned and would be replaced with vertical granite curving and sidewalk consistent with the rest of the sidewalk in that area. We've specified that at each of the entrances from the sidewalk into the driveway entrance, we would have handicap access ramps out in the Old Country Way area. And we've reviewed our drainage calculations with respect to, um, an outlet pipe elevation with our drainage system. We've confirmed that the elevations on our site plans are accurate, uh, and how it's modeled in the stormwater management package which we submitted is correct. We get four.
Okay. Do you have any, do you have anything else planned at this point? Is there somebody who could give us an overview of the operation so we know how their brewery actually functions?
Sure, that would be nice.
That would be, that would be helpful.
Sure. Um, how much detail would you like to hear about the actual brewery process versus things like... How much detail would you like to hear about the actual brewing process versus things like noise and...
Well, I think what we're interested in knowing, at least I'm speaking a little bit for myself, but hopefully for my fellow board members here, is the basic process, so we understand what's going on, and then what might be coming out of that basic process and going into that basic process.
Yeah, we'll start at the end.
Okay.
There's four key ingredients in the beer. You have water, which makes up about 90% of beer. There are then malted barley, grain, and hops, that's the organic matter, and then yeast, which converts the sugars that we extract from the grain, converts the sugars into alcohol and carbon dioxide. When we are done brewing, there is organic waste that we then have to deal with, the spent grain, hops, proteins that come out during the boil as we cook the beer. And it's all organic matter. And we have, I'm at, intoxicated local farms in the area right now to actually donate the grain. So it's a win-win for both, the farmer gets free feed, cool livestock and cattle, and I bring my spent grain. That's how we did things at my last job as a brewer. I worked at Georgetown Brewery in Seattle, Washington, for two years. So borrowing a lot of the best practices from the operations over there.
And so how did those four materials come into this? I mean, obviously, the water is piped, it's soon here.
Piped in.
Connect to the town water system, right?
Yes.
Okay. How about the other three?
The hops and the grain are delivered.
Frequently?
Also. No, not frequently, we'll shoot pallets, 50-pound bags of grain. Each batch can have anywhere between 600 to 1,300 pounds of grain. We'll receive pallets, and we have an area in the building dedicated for grain storage, so it's kept off the ground, cut down any pests that might try to get in. It's kept dry and, you know, away from...
So how frequently would you have those kinds of deliveries?
Say, two to four weeks, depending on season and how...
Oh, once every two to four weeks? It's not like a daily delivery or anything like that?
Oh, no. In yeast, the other kind of key ingredient here is, actually delivered once. And the great thing about yeast is as it eats through the sugars, it multiplies, and we can actually harvest it from the tanks when we use it. So that's kind of our own, we internally recycle and discuss that on our books as well. So...
And then how often does spent grain and other things get trucked out?
The day of, ideally.
So like, once a day?
We won't be brewing once a day. At most, the way we've kind of calculated our capacity and how much we're going to do, it'd be about four batches a week. So twice, we'll do double batches in a day, so ideally it'd be twice a week.
Twice a week?
Yeah.
Is that for the first year, or is that for the fourth year?
That's at capacity.
At the 3,600 or whatever it is?
3,600 barrels a year is what we can have as capacity right now, based on the fermenter space that we've injected. If we add fermenters or add fermenting space, that would change, but kind of maximize the space as it is. 3,600 barrels, that'd really be very happy.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's at capacity, four beers a week.
And what's inside the building? Is it basically just big vessels with piping?
Yeah, so, yeah, the equipment can really be split into the hot side and the cold side. The beer, it's more or less cooking. We have a mash tun where we soak the grains for about an hour. There's a screen on the bottom of that tank where we then filter off the sugary water that we've extracted out of the grains.
And the leftovers, the spent grains?
Leftovers, spent grain. And then, yeah, there's a, there's opening where we can clean out that vessel. But the water, sugary water that comes out of the bottom then gets pumped into the kettle. And that's where we have the hops and other spice ingredients, depending on the style of beer we're brewing. And kettle, then it boils for anywhere between one and two hours. And that's the hot side. We then cool that down really quickly through a heat exchanger. We send cold water one direction through every other plate. Hot water comes through the other direction, every other plate, cools it down from 200 degrees down to fermenting temperatures, around 70 degrees in about an hour. That 70-degree liquid goes into a fermenter, which is cleaned and sanitized prior to brewing. And it sits in that tank for two to three weeks with the yeast. The yeast that allows the yeast to make the beer, they do the real work. And then after it's done the conditioning, we put it into a bright tank, which is another type of vessel, but it's not for fermenting, it's for carbonating and cleaning up the beer. And then we will keg or pack, depending on the package type we use from that tank.
Good.
And it's ready to consume.
And that's all on the back half, the metal building portion of that?
Yeah, that's entirely, yeah, entirely the larger building.
Okay, I think I... Does anybody have any more questions on just the basic process?
Oh, I know, like, down at Harpoon Brewery in Boston, they have those, the vertical tanks that are on the outside? Like, those would be located inside the building in your proposal, correct?
Correct, yeah. All the tanks will be inside the building. No plans to go outside the building. It's kind of out of my realm of expertise to do that, so all the tanks and all the equipment will be inside the building.
And to piggyback on what Steve said, the deliveries right now, I'm looking at the site plan, it would basically, the truck would come through the parking area and go around to the back of the building, right? And unload whatever ingredients they needed?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. I mean, to clarify, so the ingredients, the timeframes I gave you are probably accurate. There'll be other deliveries, I mean, not every day, but, you know, there'll be glassware there or... Just like any business that we see, you know?
We have to have the outgoing product go somewhere too, right?
Yeah, we're going to try to do 90% or more out of the taproom. That's the business model we've gone with right now. If, you know, during slower season, winter, there's an opportunity to sell the same amount of beer to other accounts, you know, we'll definitely explore those options. But the idea, you know, the potential plan is to do most of the business through the taproom, bring people to Citrus.
So it's really going to be about having enough parking or whatever for individuals to come in and buy then, is that right? Okay.
Yeah, we fill the parking and the capacity of the taproom, the schoolhouses, which is kind of where we're really going to promote it. Obviously, just because of the historical significance of it. I believe the estimate's going to be about 45 people in that. So I think that the parking should be enough for the capacity we're testing here.
Okay.
And may I ask another question?
Yeah, sure.
So, since I've been to Harpoon a couple times, is that going to be somewhat a similar model? Like, they have the pretzels, they have some stuff, some food, but it's mainly about going there? It's, like you said, it's not a restaurant, but there is some food there to pair with the beer?
Yeah, so we actually won't be preparing any food. To the extent as possible, we'll provide snacks, but I had talked to Keith, the Board Health, about having other restaurants. I want to have a kind of partnership with other restaurants in the area to allow patrons to bring their own food in. So whether pizza gets delivered, some calls and has pizza delivered to the restaurants or to the breweries, or people bring a sandwich with them. We see the okay from Board Health, that's, that'll be allowed.
That's unique.
There won't be any preparation.
Bring your own food instead of bring your own beer.
And people will be able to fill up their growlers and stuff, right? They'd be able to fill up, you know, their...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there'll be beer for consumption on premise, so in the taproom, they will serve, not sure the size yet, but pints or half-pints. And then there'll be growlers, there'll be cans and bottles that can be purchased and then consumed.
That's my question, so you're going to have barrels, but also you're going to bottle a can of beer too?
Yeah, we'll do the growler, which is a half-gallon jug.
Yeah, okay.
And that's just, we fill that off the tap.
Right.
Right there.
Okay.
And then we'll have cans or bottles that will be available for taking. They'll last a little longer, the can and bottle. Growler usually, you won't consume it within two or three days.
So it's a 24-hour operation, pretty much? It sounds like it probably is, I mean...
As far as the brew?
Yeah.
So the brew will probably take place early in the week, Monday, Tuesday?
Yeah.
At capacity, if we're doing four batches a week, I'd like to do double batches Monday and Tuesday. Taproom, early on, the idea is just to be open a few days a week. We don't want to be a bar or restaurant, so have limited hours on Thursdays and Fridays, open in the longer hours. On Saturday, I haven't really decided, Sundays, you know, maybe during football season, people want to pick up beer for the game. But it'll be a limited operation out of the taproom early on, and depending on the success of that, hopefully expand to more days during the week. But, I mean, again, I really don't want to be a bar, so we're not going to be open until midnight. I see us being open until eight or nine at night.
I was thinking 24 hours in the brewing process, I mean, there's got to be somebody there, probably 24 hours once being brewed.
Great question, no. So the beer keeps going.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll...
Everybody goes home.
Everyone goes home and come back the next day, yeah.
Does any of the process equipment keep running through the night? Pumps, anything like that? Nothing like that?
There might be a pump to keep hot water going, you know, circulate it, to keep hot water hot for the next day.
That's all inside the building, though?
There'll be a vacuum, it's something vacuum, so the sound is, we'll deliver. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be very loud at certain late hours.
So I have to ask, Untold Brewing? Is there a story behind that name?
It's an untold story.
A little bit, yeah, we need to hear it. Yeah, no, it's a personal story. I always find that, you know, people, when they sit down, have a beer together, tell stories. Some of the best stories I've heard about the beer, the name just resonated with me when I thought of it. Personally, I have a different background. Two years ago, I left a corporate job to try brewing, which I've been homebrewing for seven, eight years, and it was a huge passion of mine. And I always kind of felt like I had this untold story that I needed to kind of let out. So two years ago, a little more than two, March 2014, I left my corporate job, became a brewer at a brewery in Seattle, and it was the best move I ever made. Just, I feel like the name just is very appropriate, just for my personal story, but also for how I, you know, see beer, bringing people together.
Great. Laura?
It's hard to follow that. Yeah, no untold stories here. So, yeah, I think some people thought when they heard about a microbrewery that it would be a little bit like a restaurant, but I understand it's not just, you know, maybe the desires of the owner, but also it's a question of licensing, that I think there are no licenses available for that type of operation right now, but, you know, that could always change. So, the taproom, I assume that's the same as the tasting area? And I know Bob Vogel isn't here, but we had talked a little bit after, there had been a design review meeting on the microbrewery. And afterwards, we were talking a little bit about the type of use for the schoolhouse, and how nice it would be to make that really like a big focus of where most of the activity was. So we both had the idea of making that, you know, like your tasting room, but I don't know if that's what you're planning.
Yeah, absolutely. We talked about, yeah, we want to make that the centerpiece of the brewery. I mean, the historical significance of it, it's going to be beautifully done. Chicken eye plans and kind of discussed ideas. It's going to be a place to draw people into the brewery, not only just to come and buy beer, but to come and stay. I think it's going to be kind of the centerpiece of that whole plan. So, yeah, absolutely, that'll be the tasting room, and want people not to just see but experience.
So, let's see, some of the other, well, I sent you around a little picture of what that schoolhouse looks like now, and it's going to be a lot of work to restore that. And, you know, I think that's really pretty amazing that they're thinking about taking that building and restoring it. So on the parking side of things, they're proposing 17 parking spaces. There's really no standard for a microbrewery for parking. So you might want to ask how many employees they're going to have, so you know how many are really going to be available for customers, if there are other microbreweries that they've looked at, and what their parking demand is, so, you know, you can kind of make sure this falls in line with those. As far as the streetscape improvements, there's an ornamental light on the property that was one of the things that was purchased with the grants that we all kind of worked hard on to get for the Green Bush area. There were a couple of street trees there. They are just maples, but they've kind of grown. It would be nice to be able to save those if it's possible. And they had mentioned about continuing the brick sidewalk, which, you know, which I think is good, because that's another one of those things that was done with these grants. On the water, the water use for the first three years is just going to come up to, I believe it's about three single-family homes worth of water. We got an email from John Clarkson late today, and he's the chairman of the Water Resources Committee. He was a little bit concerned with some of the figures that were made public at town meeting, which were much, much higher in terms of the potential amount of beer that would be brewed and the potential water use. So, you know, you might want to think about that in your conditions, that if the brewing exceeds, you know, some kind of, you know, amount, which is, you know, maybe somewhat larger than they're high, what they're projecting now, that they would have to come back to you. And on the sewage, that was a concern with the DPW. I don't know whether, when they signed on with the pretreatment, if they had discussed that with their consultant. They have a consultant for the sewage treatment plant. They know that the biological oxygen demand of the yeast is going to kind of throw the bacteria in the plant somewhat out of kilter. So they really need to have somebody take a close look at that, I think, but we haven't...
When you say they have a consultant, you're saying DPW has a consultant looking at this?
No, I'm suggesting that I think they should, have their consultant look at it. And I don't know what the cost would be, I don't think it would be a lot of money, but that's something that the planning board can ask that the applicant, you know, pay for.
I can speak to Sewer Research, I have my discussion with them too, if you'd like me to.
I've just had like two more things.
Of course, sorry.
Okay. So the only other thing that I have, actually, it's just one more thing, is one too. The odors, when the mash, I think it's called, the organic, I don't know if people saw the, there was a program on NPR on beer brewing within the past 10 days or so. But they talk about the mash, and it's all the organic solid waste, which are typically stored outside. I think this sounds like the kind of thing that you're trying to get the farmers to come and pick up. You might want to make sure that there's some containment for that and some odor control for that in case the arrangements with the farmers don't work out, or there's, you know, some breakdown in, you know, the farm use. And I know Peter's going to talk about the stormwater, but just to add, that there is going to be some maintenance associated with some of the stormwater on the site, some of the stormwater facilities, and, you know, that should be accounted for in the conditions.
Okay.
I was going to say, have we heard from Peter yet?
No, we haven't.
Good evening, Peter Palmer from Merrill Engineers, I'm Lance Raitus. We did review actually both sets of plans, the plans that we received early on, we submitted a report on the 20th, and then we did receive the revised plans today. We were able to get a report to Laura DeSefoer. And basically, most of our comments were addressed relative to both stormwater and site plan contents. As far as the stormwater, we were completely satisfied with the method of disposal, as well as the size of the system and so on. As far as the general plan contents, we didn't find anything in the information relative to the sign. As far as the details of the sign, we saw where the sign was going to be located. The design engineer indicated he was going to be slated for a separate sign permit. I didn't know if that's something that we would need to see. The second part of that was, we didn't have any architectural plans, but I do understand they were submitted to the design review. And again, I don't know if that's something the board finds acceptable, if they want to see them themselves. The only other comment I had was, there is, in modeling for the stormwater recharge system, the system is modeled correctly, with, at least in my opinion, one exception. It's modeled with an overflow. Basically, it's allowing flow to come out of the tree box filters, just in the model. It doesn't happen for the 100-year storm. But the elevations and the calculations don't agree with the elevation shown on the plan. And I think it's important that they be correct, that it's a helping system. The system's going to function... The system's going to function fine and has actually no bearing whatsoever on the functional system. But I think, again, if something were to happen, I think if you were to go back, you need the calculations to jive with what's the information that's on the plan. And I'd be happy to do the rest of the questions.
And you've already, you've already heard that comment before, Greg?
Yeah, I know. When we design these subsurface systems, we design it with an overflow pipe in the event that they ever overflow. The model that we put together shows that during the 100-year storm event, the chambers never reached that overflow pipe elevation. And there's a discrepancy in our model from that overflow pipe elevation to the elevation listed on the plan. But I think what Mr. Palmer is saying and what I see in the report is, regardless of whatever we list that elevation as, the stormwater's never getting to that overflow, even during the 100-year storm event. So.
It's just clear, I think the elevation on the plan and the elevation in the calculation should be the same, whether the water reaches that elevation or not. Because if something were to happen, and we could go back into it, the question would be, why doesn't the plan jive with the calculations? And why wasn't it built to comply with the calculations? It's really a procedural and a kind of a documentary-type situation, but it's obviously the board's decision on whether they should jive.
It sounds like they should. Right?
We can certainly change the calc. It will have no bearing on the end result, but it would certainly make it jive. And I would agree with Peter's statement on that.
Okay. Okay. You're up.
My turn?
Well, Anne, I would look at the Anne first.
This is something that went through town meeting for its own change. As a member of the Economic Development Committee, this is exactly what the committee was charged, commission was charged with, was to bring in new business, new tax revenue. How many employees will you have, do you think?
There are three owners by the end of the year. We're hoping to have additional seven or eight employees.
Okay. So more employees, more revenue, a destination. It's, I think it's a win-win situation. The concerns that some people have had, and I do not have a concern, is the building is a prefab building. But I think from the sketches that I have seen and the fact that 50 Country Way is going to be, not prefab, but modular, that if it's done tastefully, correctly, it will, with the schoolhouse in front of it, the landscaping, that it will be beautiful, and it will be an excellent addition to Green Bush and part of the visioning that Economic Development Commission has, as well as, I think, our members here, that this is a win-win. There is an issue over the water. How many, what were you talking about, Mr. Elder, in terms of the amount of gallons of beer that you were?
So one barrels, 31 gallons.
Yep.
So the first year, we're hoping to do about 850 barrels, which would be, and it takes about five gallons of water to make one gallon of beer. So we'll be using for the production of the beer about 132,000 gallons of water. For comparison, the family four quarter of the US EPA uses about 146,000 gallons of water a year, using Situate Water Vision data off the website. Situate family four uses about 138,000 gallons of water a year. So we're going to use less than family four that first year if our productions are correct. At capacity, doing 3,600 barrels of beer, that's just short of 560,000 gallons of water. And that is still less than about four families of four.
And if I could just add, it's a lot less than, by right, you could put in there Fahouzi, it would much less. So.
Well, I think under the circumstances, as far as I'm concerned, it's a win-win situation. I think it would be really a plus, not only for Green Bush, but for the town.
I agree with all of that. Usually, in the end, I agree with things. But I agree, I think that, a couple of comments or questions, I guess. So as I understand it, all the storage will be done inside? There'll be no outside storage?
For the brewery?
Yes.
There's an enclosed dumpster at the top left. Yeah, other than that, it's all material. All enclosed, gated.
And the other?
But the dumpster's not holding process waste or anything, right? It's just, yeah, it's trash, right? Okay.
And I think it's the integration of the metal with the metal building with the school. I think in the rendering that we saw in terms of elevations is very well done. I think it's a good application for a metal building. Other than that, I have both comments. Oh, have you seen, did you see the letter from Clarkson?
No.
No.
I think the suggestion was that we put an upper limit on the use of water, given that the zoning bylaw has a much larger production limit than what you're proposing here, which is probably a useful thing to consider as a check-in point, you know, settle a limit. And if you get past 600,000 gallons a year or whatever, I guess we'd want you to come back and tell us what's going on if you're changing, you know, if you're changing your production capability, essentially.
I think the numbers that John uses are a variation of what you had. I think so. The net result is appreciably the same thing.
I mean, as long, you know, we have to talk, have you analyzed that amount? As long as it's a reasonable number, I don't think we have a problem.
Well, I would leave it to you to suggest a number. I think the Water Resource Commission's concern was that the limitation in the zoning bylaw was much larger than 3,600 barrels a year.
Yeah.
And that translates into something more like 2.5 million gallons a year or something like that. And the town might not be in a position to provide that kind of water. So. We'll leave it to you to suggest 600,000, right? Or, you know?
The zoning bylaw, that definition of a microbrewery is actually taken from the Brewers Association definition. So it was just kind of copying over the language to define a microbrewery as the Brewers Association defined it, but not necessarily to.
No, I think their concern is just the limitation of what Situate has available for water supply. And, you know, to put a limit on what you do based on your maximum capacity. And if you want to increase that capacity, I think the idea would be you would come back in to talk to the planning board.
So, yeah, I just had a couple of comments. I think it's, as everyone said, really a great idea. Just a question, and this is probably more the design review, but like we received this sketch. Is it planned to be that the roof would be the green? That's nice. I like it. And by the way, I'm really happy to hear that the current structure is being preserved or potentially moved. Because it seems, I mean, I haven't been inside, but it seems like a nice house. I was kind of surprised when I first drove by it. That it would be just torn down. So.
That's a win-win.
Yeah, that's a great win. I'm glad to hear that. I think reusing the schoolhouse is fantastic. I like, and I don't know, I mean, I know these windows aren't currently on that schoolhouse, but the windows and the panes are also kind of a nice New England feel. I feel that that's a good, and again, this is probably more the purveyance of the Design Review Committee, sorry, Hal, but.
We hadn't seen this.
That was taken 40 years ago.
Okay.
And they're still there. The inside range coating's still intact.
Well, I really like this particular sketch, how it has the panes, whatever, it's a six over six, I think, or maybe it's even at a four over, or whatever it is, 12 over 12 in this particular case. Anyway, that has a nice feel to it. And so I think also this front where you've got the main doors here, and it's coming in with the window or a large window would invite people in on a cold winter's evening. You could see what was going on in the tasting room. So that's nice. And I think it also, as some other people have said, having a really nice structure out front kind of mitigates potentially the metal building in the back. Although also this design item of having the, again, the pane windows over the door, I think is a nice idea to tie that in with the structure here. So, anyway, I like that. And I think it's a great use of the area. I will agree with what Laura said. And I can't quite remember, where does this, the brick banding sidewalk end right now?
It continues across the front of this property.
Oh, it does? Because you had suggested that they would continue it, but it does go all the way then, right?
Well, just if they have to fill in where the driveway is now, for instance.
Okay. Because even in this sketch, I know it's just a sketch, but they're showing the lighting as well that was done for the Green Bush area, which is, again, nice. So all I was going to say is, if the brick-banded sidewalk doesn't continue, it would be great to have that continue to the property line there. So. But otherwise, I think, as Anne said, it's a great use for the Green Bush area, the Village Business Overlay District, and for the Economic Development Committee. And so as long as the water usage and the sewer usage can be worked out, I fully support it.
I agree with a lot that's been said. I think it's a great use. I love you saving your building. I had questions that were already answered, so I know, I think it's wonderful. I love beer. But, yeah, I welcome you and good luck. But it's a wonderful idea.
Great. I have a few questions myself. And again, I think, on the whole, this is a great opportunity for a pretty exciting new business in Situate. And so I commend you for taking on the challenge here. The, a few things that, and maybe this gets addressed through a deeper conversation with the DPW, but do we know how much wastewater we'd be discharging at sort of maximum capacity here?
So, good thing about beer, so it takes five gallons to make beer, but one gallon is being consumed. So it's actually less water going into the sewer. Projections, I have for the first year, so it's right around 100,000 gallons, it's 80% of what I use going into the sewer.
So in year four, it's going to be 400,000 or something like that?
Just north of 400,000, yeah.
Okay.
The pre-treatment system, so I talked with DPW for a long time about the best way. I wanted to meet all of their requirements for my F1, because that's very important. It's a brewery to be in compliance with DPW, but also for, you know, environmental concerns. And we think it's best to do the environment as well to pre-treat our F1 as much as possible before it gets to the sewer department for them to do everything. I can tell you 95, 98% of breweries do not treat their wastewater. I couldn't find a single one in Massachusetts that pretreats. So what we're doing is already going to be far above and beyond what other breweries are doing. And I think it's going to make the job of the sewer department a lot easier. Right now, the sewer department treats 1.2 million gallons a day. If you take my F1 the first year and break it out over the course of the year, it's going to be just north of 300 gallons a day. So it's like, I think I had two one-hundredths of a percent of the volume. The load, so the BOD, the TSS, the Tulsa Sand solids are obviously higher with a brewery than a domestic water. But even that, I looked at the load, I talked to DPW, get their numbers of what they process per load each day. And my load is going to add four one-hundredths of a percent to the sewer water that they already process. So when I spoke with them back in March, Rick Mosca and Kevin Cafferty, they saw my pre-treatment plan, went through it together. They were content and happy with what I was doing and agreed that what I was doing was satisfactory. And even we'd like to move forward with the project.
Okay. Have you heard anything else other than this?
No, I haven't. I'm waiting to get.
We haven't gotten any written feedback?
Waiting to get a final email. We got something from Sean Anderson, from the Water Division Supervisor, but he just wanted more numbers. So when I, yeah, I got that second memo from, from Mr. Elder. He sent that on to Mr. Anderson. And then I know he met with Water Resources Committee, and they were talking about this five-old country, six-old country way. So I assume that reflects, you know, Waters' comments as well.
Okay. So we're still waiting to hear?
So we're still waiting on sewer.
Yeah, sewer on it. Okay, good. A few other things that we talked to, fire department, is there anything special here? Do we need sprinkler systems? Is that happening or?
I don't know, but I'm thinking about the access, you know, behind the building, if they need a fire lane, you know, who knows? So.
So we're waiting for them?
I think we do need to hear back from them.
Okay. And in terms of, you're boiling a lot of water, is this some kind of gas heater of some kind or?
We'll use a gas boiler. And then we'll use steam to boil the water. Yeah, the kettle has a jacket around it. It's a jacket, so steam, every steam jacket.
So there's available gas supply for the site and all that? Okay. Hours of operation, it's basically day shift? Is that what we're talking about? No, no evening, late evening? I'm just thinking about, you know, noise and that kind of stuff for any of the neighbors, but.
Obviously barring anything unexpected happens, quick breaking down during the day or something like that. But, you know, the day shift is preferable for everybody involved.
Okay. You're going to do some treatment. It sounds like small volumes of chemicals? I mean, you're treating for pH, so you're going to need an acid and a base adjuster of some kind?
Right.
How are you managing that? Or how are you planning to manage that? I mean, they can be, you know, hazardous materials, right?
Yes, yes, they can be. We will buy concentrated chemicals, but for use, it's usually diluted down to a 1% or 2% solution before we use it for cleaning. That's, you know, the organic matter is usually broken down by caustic solution. And any beer stone that might accumulate on the set tanks is broken down by acid solution. Experience I've had working in the brewery is typically a combination of these. High pH, low pH counteract each other once they go to the pre-treatment vessel in the back. We will monitor the acidity of the pre-treatment F1, pre-treated F1, and we'll dose accordingly to make sure that it goes into the sewer in the range required by the sewer department.
So I would assume that's something else the fire department should look at, just the storage of?
Yeah, the MSDS sheets, and to make sure that they're stored in some area that has like a concrete, you know, floor to it.
What about noise? Will this equipment create, are there blowers on the roof? Or you said you're using cooling, cold water? Is there a cooling tower? How is all that done?
Yeah, I can speak to the brewery equipment.
Yeah.
So the movement of liquid from one vessel to another is done by a pump, 2 horsepower. My experience, it's been no louder than a vacuum.
That's all inside, though? That's going to be enclosed, right? Is there anything outside or discharged outside?
How's that might be? There's a stack in the kettle, so steam from the boiler to the kettle.
Potentially.
I mean, on your little design, you show a stack between the two.
Is that from the boiler or from the kettle?
From the kettle.
From the kettle. Okay. And is there any odor coming out of that?
From brew days, it's probably the strongest odor. I would equate it to something from the bakery when they're baking. It's, personally, I find it, speaking for myself only there, but it's cooked grain is really what it is. Hundreds of pounds of grain that are sitting in the water that's 150 degrees. So it gives a cooked kind of open. The hops provide sort of a citrusy or floral, overall, depending on the style. It's really limited to the brewing days. Once the beer mixes into the vessel, there's no.
It's contained after that?
It's contained.
Okay. Okay. So is there anything else outside? Where does the cooling water come from?
There's a cold, cold water tank. So this will be a hot water tank and a cold water tank where I'll get all the water that's filled from the water made, but
Oh, it's just city water, then?
Yeah, there is a chiller, a condenser.
Outside?
We'll get on the outside.
Where would that be? Any idea?
In the back, yes. The condensers for the air conditioning system will be on the back of the building.
Okay. And that's where the storage place is, back there, right?
Yeah, that's where the back door is.
Yeah. No, I mean, the, the self-storage place is beyond, directly.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Lighting, we talked about trash. I think those are most of the questions I had. And it sounds like we still need some input from a couple of the departments here, right?
Who's going to mow that nine-foot grass that goes along the strip of the building? Nine-foot grass.
I think somebody down there is going to do that.
I live right next door, so.
Okay.
Do enough samples I could give it a run.
And then we will see at some point, proposed sign? Or signage?
So I can speak to the sign a little bit. I brought a couple of versions of the logo if you'd like to look at it.
Sure.
But I feel like the design is very much in line with some of the character of the town. It might be sort of script slash traditional type logo, no crazy pictures, you know, everything is going to be very tasteful, in my opinion.
Not like a mug?
I'm going to get some branded glassware, yeah, t-shirts or something. But the sign is going to be really in line with what you see around Situate. I'm envisioning something that's maybe four by three in front of the brewery, you know, a neon sign. It's just something that people driving, looking for the police can
As you can see. Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? From the public left?
I actually now, just, just from based on this rendering, is there, is this fence current or is that proposed?
It's there right now.
It is, it is current?
Sockade fence that goes the length of the property.
Okay.
All the way back to the storage.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, okay. It's on the left side of the drawing there?
Correct.
Okay.
And how much room is there? Just now that I'm thinking about, how much room is there between sort of the building where you nose in parking and behind you? Is there plenty of room for backing out and all that kind of stuff for the traffic pattern?
We have a standard two-way aisle. The parking spaces are 18 feet deep. And then between the building and the parking space
It's 22.
I believe it's either five or six feet, and that would be striped.
22 from the end of the
And we'd be providing curb stops.
Well, even before the fence to the curb.
It's a six-foot striped aisleway along the side of the building, a curb stop, a standard 18-foot space. And then this is a two-way, 22-foot wide aisle.
Yep.
And the truck traffic will go all the way past it to the back, right? For deliveries?
Door in the back.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So it looks like we have a few things still left to be addressed. But I think we've had a chance to get all of our questions and comments out. Anybody else?
Oh, one last. Just what's your timeframe? Is as soon as, like, is it within the next year or as soon as possible? I know it depends on all the, I know it depends on all the permits and everything.
Yeah, there, there's a certain element that's out of my control. There is a, like the permitting process I need to go through, independent power through the federal government and state. I've received my permit from TTV, federal, the ABCC, the state. That takes some time, months.
You have to have the plans.
Before you do that?
Before he can do that. That's why, you know, we have a pretty good sense, I think, at this point that things are okay. But he's got to be careful on that because you don't want to start it all over again with different plans.
Sure.
Yeah, so it's like, you got to get it here, then he has to go. So I don't know what the ultimate length of time is on that.
No, I do, I do need a plan to complete the building before the permitting committee starts.
Okay.
And just one more question while you mentioned that. So in the brewing area, when things overflow or spill on the floor and all that kind of stuff, I imagine there are overflows, where does all that go?
Yeah, that's a great question. So everything goes into four drains. So the floors will be sloped down to a drain, and then the drains run through the floor to a sump well. So we'll fill it, just like a sump pumping system. And once that fills up, it pumps it into the pretreatment vessel.
So it's all going to town sewer then? It's not going anywhere else?
No, everything will go into that treatment vessel before you touch the sewer. That way I can monitor, repeat, make sure the temperature before it even hits the sewer.
And the, the sump that it's going into is sized to handle sort of the maximum spill at one time or something?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the spill, what you're talking about is actually catastrophic event. It can close valves to stop spill before the amount of liquid to get into the sump pump, you know, overflow. But as soon as the sump fills up and turns the pump on, then we begin pumping at a faster rate with the pump, well, you know, so there's
Okay.
Pre-treatment is that?
Yes. Yeah, the pretreatment vessel holds more liquid than any other vessel.
I was just going to say, did, did we want to have a report from Hal?
Sure.
Well, I just have a question. Actually, I did create a memo. It came kind of late. I'm not sure if the board had the chance to see it.
It was about the, the glass festival?
For everyone.
Well
I, I didn't. Did we get it?
We did copy it for you all.
Yeah, I might have missed it.
But we only just got it for today.
Today, yeah. So I could
Oh, I might have missed it then.
Read from that if you
Yeah, that'd be great.
Kind of if I were. My question can follow that, because I just had a question. So, you know, basically, I said in here that, you know, we really applaud the project altogether. Just, you know, like Ann said, it's a total great addition to that district and to the town. It's also, it is definitely going to draw people to the town. So, and we all applaud the, everyone involved for not only moving and preserving and sort of, you know, showcasing this historic, what is it called? The Union School? Is that where?
Yeah.
The Union School.
Is it just a one-room school now?
Yeah, yeah. And also, you know, saving the other house. I'm not sure if it's actually historical, but it's definitely a significant structure. And it's going to just be moved to Kitty Corner and around that, that triangle. So it's going to be very nice. The, you know, so as an addition to the community, everything is terrific. We had, we had asked for the drawing, which I guess that must be the drawing that, right, we had the chance to see that.
Okay.
And that was going to be my question. Will the, is there going to be a necessity for the project to come back to DRC before, before you can actually act on it? Or, I just, I'm the only one on DRC to see that, that drawing right now.
We have that.
Oh, do you? Okay. Or can it be distributed outside?
It's not allowed.
Can it, can that drawing be distributed outside of the purview of the, of the DRC actual meeting or?
Well, I'm not sure where the planning board wants.
Right. So we just, you know, we had a couple of concerns that it looks like they've fine tuned it a little bit. They had some concerns about how the joining of the old schoolhouse and the juxtaposition with the Morton Building was going to, was, right, was going to look. So we, we asked to see some, and I'm seeing it for the first time now. And yeah, I think this looks like it's handling it, you know, in one man's opinion, nicely. And also, yeah, we just needed to see a drawing that was a little more fully rendered like, like this. And, and I have one other question then. I don't know who asked at the DRC meeting, but the proposed height, is that, how does that compare to Allen's building? Is it roughly the same height?
No, it's a little bit lower.
Lower?
Here are the statistics here. Allen's building is, greatest 30.9.
Okay.
Building's 32.3, 63 feet.
Oh, right, okay.
The historic building out back, 40.
Yeah.
That's a 33, 25 inches, 58.
Okay.
Brewery is at elevation 30, 25 feet, 55. So it kind of nestles in there.
Yeah.
The way Allen's helped out with the design. My barn on Stockard Road, it's 60.
Yeah.
And Stockard Road and Brewery is 250 feet away. So in the schoolhouse, which is elevation 30, I mean, it's about 23 feet tall.
Okay.
So it's, it works on the
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. I, yeah, I wasn't sure how tall this was going to end up being. But yeah, I think that this
I would say if it's, you know, if, if you, if that, and you got, you having an opportunity to review your questions and you're satisfied, we would just want to hear back from you. You know, your final recommendation, so.
Yeah, it might be a good idea. Just, we could, would it be okay to email that to the drawings to the, to the DRC?
Well, if you're going to meet and, you know, we
Yeah, sure.
Typically send out
We'll have an opportunity to meet before you, you actually, it sounds like some of the sudden work needs to get done.
Yeah, well, we'd like the next meeting to have all this sort of wrapped up if we can. So, so you should get to your stuff as well.
Right, our meeting is
In a minute or two, I think you'll hear when the next planning board meeting will be. And then we can figure out, if you could be accessible by email tomorrow, we can figure out a good time for you all to meet. But I think it'll be pretty much almost like within the next week.
We need to meet within the next week?
Well
Yeah, to keep, keep sort of on schedule here, I'd like to try to get all of the open issues at the next meeting and see if we can put this to bed.
Our meeting is, it's July, it's, yeah, August.
This week is August.
It sounds like it can be done potentially informally, though. It's what you're saying, is that they can just report back to you, not have another formal meeting.
We're trying very hard to really respect the open meeting law and not have, you know, discussion. We, we've been told by, you know, the powers that be not to discuss projects by email at all. And there's a letter from Town Council that is floating around that I have yet to put my fingers on that said the same, so.
I didn't need to script that one, you know.
Oh, I, I know.
Well, there was
So, so I guess that kind of puts the kibosh on a really informal casual meeting.
I mean, it sounds to me like you were concerned about the elevations and you've got those.
Elevations and, and the joinery of the two buildings.
And I think you, the drawing physically gives you those.
Pardon me?
I said the rendering gives you those, I think.
Yeah, it does. It also shows the Morton Building in a little more detail because obviously those buildings have a lot of options. You can, you can really deck them out if you look through their catalog. But, you know, I think with the, I do think that the addition of the kublas on top, you know, you should definitely follow through.
I think it would be.
Yeah, yeah. There's a, there's a bunch of little, you can even have these little shed things that go over here if you need it. But I do think, I agree with what Richard said about the, the lights, the fixed lights above the, the doors, adding a nice touch if you want. Oh, yeah? Okay. Well, so let's get, let's, you know, we'll send the plans out and we can talk to the DRC. Yeah, sorry.
All right. Okay, good.
If I, one quick, if I'm not mistaken, isn't on the, on the website, isn't there a weathervein that says Untold Brewing? I saw the, the Untold Brewing logo with the weathervein.
The weathervein color, that's one of the logos.
I was going to say, well, that could be potentially on top of one of those.
I was thinking that.
The blue house.
There you go.
Anyway, that's it.
Have you got something to say?
Yeah, I think it's all been said and then
No, I'm thinking about your motion.
I, I move to accept the opulence request that the public hearing for site plan administrative review for the microbrewery proposed Six Old Country Way be continued until August 11th at 9:15 PM in the Slefman's Hearing Room at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, and continue the time for filing a decision with the town clerk until September 9, 2016.
So we've got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And just to, unfortunately, I will not be able to attend that meeting. So, but I, I will have my support before.
Okay. Thank you all.
Excellent.
Thanks for the brewing education, too.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
Are you currently, is this your project, your, your main job right now, getting this thing going? Because you left your brewing job in Seattle.
I left my brewing job
Oh, good luck.
In March. Thank you. I missed the brewing part.
Mr. Fagan, was this your photo?
Yes.
Thank you for sharing that.
Just to show the size of it.
Yeah. I think that if they use those same, it's going to be great.
I think they're Harvey Model 3s.
Are you serious?
School.
Wow.
Father.
Yeah.
Great.
Harvey Model 3s.
That's great that they're, it's great that they're reusing it.
We may.
We may. We've had a motion to take a two-minute break. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a great idea.
We're on break.
This happens.
So we're on 182 to 186 First Parish Road. And I think the first order of business here was about the scenic road violation. And do we have any more input on that one right now?
That's what I called you about, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so 182 First Parish Road, we were first, this came to our attention back in June. The property owner, myself, and the contractor that was doing the work received a letter from the board dated June 7th alleging a violation of scenic road bylaw. I know you held a meeting that Thursday night. None of us received the letter until either Friday or Monday. So that's why you didn't see anyone representing this project at that meeting, and this was previously discussed. But what I did is I followed up to that initial request. I submitted a letter to the board stating that it is my opinion that it was not a violation of the bylaw at this property. Obviously, the property was clear cut. We have pictures of that. We're not denying that. But when it comes to the scenic road bylaw, the scenic road bylaw essentially prevents two things. It prevents the elimination of stone walls along the property of the right of way. And secondly, it prevents the cutting of any trees within the right of way. Trees were cut on the property, but I don't believe any trees were cut in the right of way or any walls removed in the right of way. I make that based, I make that statement based off of a couple of things. First off, a record plan for the property dated 1960, which depicts a stone wall along the back property line. It does not depict any stone walls along the front of this property along First Parish Road, but it clearly depicts them along the back property line. The other thing that is of note on that plan, the front property line is shown up very close to the street. If you scale it off, it scales off at approximately one to two feet off the back edge of the sidewalk to the lot line. Next, I follow up with a plan that was submitted to this board. It was an A&R plan performed by DeSalle Burke and Associates. This was a survey done in 2014 for the property owners. This survey locates again a wall along the back property line, a side property line. It does pick up a wall approximately 40 feet long. I've highlighted it in orange. What you'll notice is that it's eight feet onto the property. It's not inside the It's not inside the right-of-way. This plan also depicts the edge of the sidewalk. The edge of the sidewalk being at the property line or within one foot of the property line. So, based off of the 1960 plan, the 2014 plan, and then the work that I've done at the site more recently, I have not found any walls in the front of the property that have been disturbed. I do see a picture that was included in your June 7th letter, which does show some placed boulders, I believe those placed boulders to be the location of that wall there. It's in excess of two feet away from the back edge of that sidewalk, clearly outside the right-of-way line. Next, we talk about the trees.
Have you measured any of this?
Yes.
Or is this, we've just gone off a different, different watches here?
I'm going off of three things. I'm going off of a professional land surveyor's stand plan and scales it out at eight feet off or onto the front of the property. I'm going off of my survey, which in my letter outlines that it confirms that location. Thirdly, I'm going off the 1960 survey that does not show a wall at that location.
So you've measured the location of the tree that was cut down, the closest tree?
Correct.
And you, you have something that shows us that it's outside the town's right-of-way?
Yes.
Is it a survey, or what is it?
I've got, I've got pictures here that depict the edge of First Parish Road as you go up and down, and you'll see that along the edge of First Parish Road in this location generally was overgrown grasses, weeds, et cetera. There were no trees, how this board has defined them, which is a diameter of three inches or greater, growing within two feet of the sidewalk in any of those pictures. And in the letter that was submitted to us on June 7th, which does depict trees that have been cleared, you'll see that all the stumps are still in place in this picture of your letter. None of the stumps are within two feet of that sidewalk.
Did you measure where those stumps are with respect to the right-of-way?
I located that large stump right in the middle.
Roads move. Right?
What's that?
Roads do move, right? So I guess I'm asking you the question.
Yes, we've, we've measured those.
Somebody measure it.
Correct.
And, and how far is it?
It is outside of the right-of-way.
How far?
Eight feet.
The tree is eight feet outside of the right-of-way?
The edge of the stump is probably six feet. Where we located the tree was at eight feet, which is where we located the storm wall. The tree was growing through the storm wall.
All right. Laura, are you comfortable with that?
Well, there was information in the DPW that the right-of-way for First Parish Road was variable. So it's, you know, it's a difficult thing to locate, but we assumed that you guys would have located it.
Yes, we did. We, we located it, we showed it on the A&R plan, which this board endorsed, and we measured it from a concrete boundary marker directly across the street. There is a right-of-way on record for First Parish Road, which does not label the stone wall as the edge of the right-of-way. In this location, it labels it as variable width of measuring forty-two feet from the concrete bound across the street, and when you pull forty-two feet from the bound across the street, you land at the back edge of the sidewalk. That's also what Mr. DeSalle, DeSalle Burke came up with in 2014, that the stone wall was not the property line, and that's also what's been shown on that 1960 record.
The forty-two feet shown here?
I think he leaves it as variable width, but he does not...
Oh, yeah, that's what I see here. Does that show it is forty-two there?
Yes, it does. Forty-two point three.
Is the DPW comfortable with that?
I haven't asked the DPW.
Okay.
I think we, we have had some discussions that it's variable width and that no one really has a definite width for First Parish Road all through that area, that it, you know, it does vary. I mean, the thing that is unusual is that a tree coming through with stone wall would not be within the right-of-way at all, and that the stone wall would not be the property boundary. I think that's definitely a little bit unusual, but I've heard this, this argument before, and I know it's, you know, it's accepted by, by some people.
Yeah, the, the stone wall that you observed out there, certainly that I picked up and DeSalle has picked up, it's not what I would call a boundary wall. Typically, a boundary wall runs along a property line, it's long and length, it's been well constructed. This here more looks like back in the 1960s when this was an operating greenhouse and they were growing, so they placed some boulders in a straight line. That straight line is approximately forty feet long. It didn't run the front property line. I'm thinking more like over on Clap Road, where you might have a long continuous wall on the front property line, where it's truly a boundary. This here does not appear to be a boundary, a boundary wall in surveying terms.
A question for Laura. The scenic road, that is the, the definition of the bylaw, it has to be within the right-of... the, the rock wall or the trees have to be within the right-of-way?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think we were all, at least, I know other people besides myself were shocked to see the complete clear cutting of those three lots right on a scenic road.
Well, in the future, that's not going to be possible without filing stormwater, for a stormwater permit, and that will be a finable violation as well. Right? Because there was no stormwater permit filed.
I absolutely agree. I personally was shocked that he was there, too. I knew he was demoing the greenhouse, and we were physically engaged at the time of filing a stormwater permit. We hadn't done it yet, but he wanted to have a clear cut of the property. I was shocked issue appearing.
All right. Well, I think at this point, then, I don't know if there's anything we need to do at this point. We've issued, we issued the violation notice, but we ought to sort of clean it up.
We can clean that up. We can send some kind of a clarification that, you know, this is what, how things appeared initially, but this didn't...
Let's, let's make sure we get the, the measurements that were taken and integrated into that.
That would be helpful. So you can email those?
Anything else on that, guys?
Are you, is there an intention to use those boulders again?
Not that I'm aware of.
Like to, to create?
Quite as good for them.
To create a stone wall or anything? No? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
So it's just going to be hauled off?
I imagine they can use them somewhere on the site, that area, or use them as a light-skate ball somewhere.
Okay.
Do we need to take any action on that, a vote or anything?
Probably a motion to find that, based on the evidence presented, that they were not in violation.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That was easy.
So, we have now a public meeting, site plan, administrative review for common driveway lots three and four, and a public hearing for stormwater permit at 182 to 186 First Parish Road. And Greg, are you here by yourself, representing all of this?
Yes.
four, as well as a filing for a common driveway. The common driveway would access lots three and four. As you probably recall, this property was divided into four lots through an A&R plan approximately a year ago. Lot one being an existing house belonging to John Roman. Lots two, three, and four would have new houses constructed on them. The plan that I have up here is our common driveway plan. It depicts the location of the common driveway. The common driveway comes in between the property lines for lots three and four. It's a sixteen-foot wide paved driveway. It has a cross slope in an easterly direction. Stormwater from that is picked up in a swell and traversed along the frontage and remains on lot four. The driveway provides a twenty-foot wide by thirty-foot turnaround, a hammerhead-style turnaround in front of the garage on lot number four, and is contained within an easement. The easement here was shown on the A&R plan, which is on record at the registry. Generally, the driveway slopes vary gradually. It's just shy of a one percent slope, so it is a very flat driveway. It comes in off of First Parish Road, elevation forty-six, and at its furthest point, which is eighty-eight feet away, the length of the common driveway is at elevation forty-six point four. The stormwater for the site we filed incorporates the development of all three lots, three and four off the common driveway plus lot two. This property here had previously been developed, it had a driveway on it, it had a number of greenhouse buildings. Some of them had been removed, but one large one did remain at the site when it was initially cut. It had 6,400 square feet of impervious surface on it. At the end of the project, we're proposing 14,000 square feet, fourteen-three-three-six is documented in our calculations. What we've done to mitigate that increase is we've designed roof drywell systems for each of the houses. All of the roof gutters would be directed into a series of four drywell pods on each of the lots. Those would allow for groundwater infiltration. And based on that, the runoff calculations we submitted, Amory Engineers had reviewed them. Their review letter dated today, I believe, confirms that we meet the rates and volumes of runoff for the storm events as required. It addressed our septic systems, which were in the design phase, that they comply with the setbacks to the drywells as required. And what we did is we added a silt fence at the down gradient limit of work as required. There's an O and N plan that we put in place. Each of the property owners would be responsible for maintaining their piece of the stormwater system, their own drywall systems.
What kind of maintenance you need on it?
On a drywall? Typically, what it requires is it requires either semi-annual cleaning of your roof gutters to get the leaves out, so you don't get that into the subsurface system, or the installation of like a gutter guard or screen type system. They're relatively low maintenance, as long as you take care of them.
Nothing really to add. The stormwater system has been tweaked a little bit to eliminate a stone trench along the driveway. I believe it's, it's the stormwater plan where the erosion control has to be tweaked a little bit. No, we got a positive report from Pat Brennan. He wasn't able to be here tonight, but he did review the stormwater system, and Greg made some changes to meet his wishes that he brought up.
Yeah?
Yeah, it appears to be fine. Maybe we were all shocked by the click of it, but now that we've gotten over that, I guess we can just move forward. I mean, it is what it is.
How does a lot drain?
This lot's generally...
First Parish back?
No, it, it runs pretty much parallel with First Parish Road from the left side of the plant toward the right toward Kane Drive.
Looks like it drains severely on that slope.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all pitched this direction here.
Oh, I mean, in that last lot, it's going to be one of those Blanchard Farm issues again, right?
It's a, it's a three-to-one slope, a grassed slope.
But it's changing sort of the, the view shed that the person next door has, right?
Yes.
Did, are the rates, do we look at all the velocities and all that? Is that okay here?
We, we did look at that. Typically, even when there's a slope like that, they, there's more absorption than there is, you know, runoff. Is there going to be some...
It looks like a, it looks like an eight-foot slope.
Yeah, I, I had brought that up also, and I was wondering if there's at least going to be, you know, some type of a swell or a stone, stone line trench or something at the bottom to make sure there isn't any stormwater going off onto the other lot? Or, and what about erosion? I think erosion during construction is going to be a big issue.
Yeah, we, I mean, we do, we do spec erosion control at the bottom of that, just as, as a silt fence. We could beat that up, we could put either a hay bale or a mulch sock along that edge during the construction phase. Post-construction, when it's, when it's grassed, I don't see it being much of an issue because we're diverting a lot of that water up gradient into the subsurface systems. So you're going to have less land area going into the, to that downstream of it.
But it's all going to that corner, though, right?
It is all going to that corner, which is where, where it currently goes. We could build a little Burma, like we did over at Wadi, you know, if you think we could build up a, a one-foot-high Burma along that eastern property line of lot four, that would help just contain it and settle it out that much more on our lot. I don't think the applicant would be opposed to that.
Would there be any, anything to gain, you think, retaining wall instead of...
You could put a retaining wall in. That would be one way to do it. Typically, I try to show it as a gray block, like I put a wall in because I know it's going to be wider if they do that. There's more expense with a wall, but you could do it that way. You know, now you'd be looking, you'd still be looking at the vertical difference, but you just wouldn't have the slope.
And there'd be more, you know, sort of flat area before you got to the other lot?
Would be.
Just to answer a question here, I'm, I'm looking at this driveway cross-section, and I see it's sixteen-foot wide and supposed to have two-foot grass shoulders, but one of them has a crushed stone trench. Shouldn't be, the trench be outside the shoulder?
That trench was removed on our revised plan.
Oh, it is? Am I looking, is the cross-section wrong then?
There were, there were two plans dated July 28th, stormwater management plan.
Oh, what do I have? I've got one dated...
They just came in today, and so...
Oh, this is new?
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Is that in here somewhere, then?
No, we didn't have enough to...
Okay.
We didn't send...
So I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't see it over there. I'm just looking at my computer.
There was a trench here, and Pat Brennan's concern was that trench was within twenty-five feet of our septic system on lot four, and the concern was that having infiltration within twenty-five... And the concern was that having infiltration within 25 feet of a septic system wouldn't be appropriate. So we reran the HYPERCAD today, eliminated the need for that trench, eliminated it from that detail, and the calculations still work without it.
It says June 27th. Is it supposed to be July 27th, or am I reading that wrong?
We just got a new plan today. It'll be July 28.
Oh, okay.
They don't have those. Okay, no, no, I heard that. I just, what did I thought maybe this was it, so.
And then there was a comment about changing, changing the infiltrators to be in fill as opposed to in-
Yes.
In ground? Where was that done?
So our original design, we did not have all of the test pits performed out here. Now we've performed all the test pits. We had the board of health agent witness them. And what we've done is we've been able to document the groundwater elevation and provide Pat with the elevation of the groundwater with respect to the elevation of the drywells near each of those locations. So I think what Pat was saying is, sure, we dug this test pit here, groundwater was typically down, I don't know, three, three feet or so. The bottom of those drywells is required to be two feet above the groundwater table. Typically, where we have those drywells, those are in areas of fill, so we're bringing the grade up above existing grade today to comply with that groundwater infiltration.
Okay. So, but you've already, you've now dug the test pits, then?
Correct.
So there's nothing left to evaluate there? Okay. Let's see, let's see if I have any other questions. And the before and after calculations, the before calculations were based on the, the pre-clearcut?
They were. They were based off of a, I believe, wooded, let me take a picture of it. Woods fair condition, hydraulic C soil, which is consistent with the soils that we have.
Okay. And I had one more question. Oh, it says you provided a stormwater management, best management practices, schedule and checklist? Is it more than that? Is there like a, is there a plan, or is it just a single?
So this will be a-
I don't think I've seen it, that's why I'm just asking.
It should be included in your drainage report.
Yeah, we don't.
Appendix, appendix A.
This is a plan that will be recorded?
This is, it's a simple sheet that the contractor can have on the site that says, here's what the BMP is, you know, inlet protection catch bases. How often do they have to inspect them? Who's doing it? Does it need repair or not? Soil stockpile, checking the silt fence around the stockpile.
Right, that's for construction, though, right?
What's that?
That's for construction?
That's for construction. We also have the same as a post-construction for the homeowner, so that they know to go out to the roof gutters semi-annually, remove, leave litter and accumulate, install gutter guards. Driveway surfaces semi-annually, go out, clean it of any accumulated sediment, so that they can, they can look at this one page, see what the task is, how often it's to be done, and see what the remedy is, rather than reading a lengthy word document. This is a one-page checklist.
But there is a document that goes with it? Or is it just a checklist?
It's, it's just a checklist.
How does the homeowner get that? Is it filed with his deed, or?
That's, that's a good question. I mean, moving forward with these, there probably should be some sort of, I know certainly with some of the subdivisions, 305 countryway, what you require was a condition that an engineer has to sit with the prospective homeowners for a minimum of an hour and discuss the drainage system. You don't have anything in place requiring that right now with these homeowner permits. That's something I think that we should adopt into the new regulations.
So how do we, how do we make sure the homeowner ever sees one of these things?
We do have a condition asking the applicant to make sure that their real estate agent shows this to anybody buying lots.
That's it?
Shows all the information that, you know, there's usually an agreement between the two homeowners, at least on the common driveway. There could be an agreement, there could be, you know, depending on how you look at the stormwater system, you could include all the three lots in it. But I would say definitely the two on the common driveway, that they're gonna maintain the common driveway, they're gonna maintain any stormwater system that's connected with the common driveway. And it's like a legal agreement. We had a standard form for that at one time, which maybe we still have. But it's, yeah, that's the way it's usually done. They have to put money up and maintain it.
I know, I'm just wondering how ultimately a homeowner even knows that piece of paper exists.
Well, like I said, we're trying to connect the real estate agents into this process. We could ask for some kind of, you know, receipt from the real estate agents that they've, they've been told this information, and that they're responsible for conveying it to prospective buyers.
I don't think that's good enough.
What, what do you think is good enough?
What I think might be good enough is that when somebody, because we're talking not necessarily the individual that purchases the property, we're talking about somewhere down the road, when it gets sold, and then it gets sold again, and so on. It's somehow, some way, there has to be a permanent documentation that is part and parcel attached to the deed, or, you know, whatever the documents are, that a homeowner is, is made aware that these are, this is the criteria that has to be met in order to maintain their property. And whether it's attached to the deed, or whether it's written in something and attached in the garage, you know, something-
I don't think that's gonna work.
No, but that sounds-
In the garage, in the deed.
But that sounds ridiculous, however, you know, somewhere down the road-
Well, how do they know they own part of a common driveway? Do they have anything?
So I mean, I'm, 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 this is, this is similar to a wetlands permit that you would record at a registry of deeds, and it's gonna run with the title of the property, and it's gonna come up every time it gets conveyed. Maybe putting a requirement that a piece of this, or, you know, the inspection schedule certainly, and then whatever special conditions the board imposes that are meant to run in perpetuity with the property, be recorded. I certainly wouldn't be opposed to something like that.
Well, I wouldn't trust necessarily a real estate agent to follow through on that. There's no way to follow up on it.
Well, we could follow it before we allow a construction permit, right, or?
This is true, but I'm talking about-
That covers you for the first sale.
Post-grade.
Yes.
Well, if it runs with the deed, then it covers you for every sale, right?
Right. We can see if it's possible to record with a deed. I mean, a special permit is, is easy to record, but this is not a special permit. It's a site plan administrative review, and typically, this isn't usually recorded, but we could find out if there's a way that we-
But how is the common driveway, there's an easement, recorded somewhere, right?
The easement's gotta be recorded.
That's an easement thing, it's recorded on the deed. Cohasset has a very similar stormwater, I learned, and they face the same issue. They, they don't require recording yet, but it's, it's coming over there as well.
Yeah, it really has to.
Yeah.
Can we put a note on the common driveway? Recording? That there's a-
Yes.
You could put a condition in your-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think at least that might get the message started.
I can only hope.
Seems like otherwise, somebody's gotta sort of pick it up by osmosis.
Yeah. Yeah. Osmosis does not work well.
Or the other thing, I just, you know, I like that way better, but you could require, like, if it's a common driveway, to actually have a homeowners association, and that could be in the documents for the homeowners association, the maintenance plan.
Yeah. But at least if it's recorded as a document associated with a common driveway in the, in the common driveway easement, then somebody's gotta go look for it, right?
But it doesn't do it with the other lot that's not part of the driveway.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah, you'd have to attach it to something.
Because we're gonna get the third lot in there somehow.
It's an issue.
It is. Not just at this site, but any one that you get, yeah.
The third lot is really at the top of the hill, you know, it's sort of the top of the food chain. I don't know how you tie them in.
Quick question, just about the common driveway itself. Is that meant, that's going to be paved, or not? Because I see that it says paved drive, paved drive, but then you've got the easement, so-
It's a, it's a paved drive. The pavement is 16 feet wide, except for the turnaround. The turnaround's 20 feet wide, 30 feet long.
Right. But then at the, at the end, where it says 16, then the paved drive that goes to the proposed dwelling on lot three? It seems like the paved drive actually is going to the center of the easement, not-
I mean, lot three will have rights over all of its own property, plus rights over-
What I'm saying is, like, if this is the driveway here, notice how it's like coming, this, this, maybe that line?
Chopping off a little center, goes to the center line.
So, I was just trying to figure out, like, according to this-
Shouldn't it be the whole thing?
Yeah, on lot three, you've got the paved drive. To me, it looks like the line is coming from the center of the easement.
Yeah. Because that, this here is exclusive use, exclusive driveway for lot three. It's outside the easement.
But I guess what I'm saying, wouldn't that look weird visually if that pavement is like halfway? Like, shouldn't it come, I, I would think it should come all the way over to point-
46.4.
Yeah, 46.4, exactly. Well, it's somewhere right around there. But you've got, like, here in my mind, here's the driveway, right? And now you've got a p, half of it now splitting off.
That makes sure those people cooperate and they both maintain it.
Okay, it just looks visually weird to me, that's all. There's nothing wrong with it, but-
I can get some. Greg, is there any mileage as far as trying to reduce the steepness of the slope going towards Kane Drive, you know, towards the lot-
Over here?
Next to Kane Drive? Is there any mileage towards reducing the width of the common driveway, since you really only have to have a 12-foot common driveway and not a 16? And then sliding the whole thing up a little bit?
The, the slope really isn't dictated by the width of that driveway. It's dictated because of the setback from the property line to the house.
Um, well, this, yes.
But I can, I can certainly try to pull that slope back by putting in a retaining wall, but-
Well, I mean, the setback is, um-
15 feet on the side.
15, so.
And how close is that toe of the slope there?
Six feet?
Retaining wall uses your rocks.
Yeah, there you go.
Five feet from the lot line.
I think you're better off with a sloped than a retaining wall.
As long as, as that slope doesn't end up in a neighbor's yard, right?
Yeah.
The neighbor may not, may not agree.
If we can pull the slope back by implementing a retaining wall, we can, we can make that provision.
It's probably gonna be more the, on anything, it's gonna be more the visual impact.
Yeah.
Kind of looking up the hill at the house, right? That's what you're gonna be doing.
I think that's what people hate.
Yeah. I wonder if it'd be better to try to provide a little, you know, screening there? As opposed to, I mean, let them figure the slope out, but just put some, you know, landscaping-type screening there?
If it's a dedicated, what, if it's marked with 80s along the lot line?
Yeah, maybe. I mean, nobody's actually sort of come forward and asked about this, but that was the, that was kind of the issue the last time we had this, right? Some of it was water, but some of it was just the visual, kind of staring up the hill at it, right?
Yeah. And also, too, the way the driveway goes, depending, I understand that this is sort of, who knows what the house will be like, et cetera. But paved driveway, does that go into that box that's a garage, or a proposed garage?
On the left side of that house?
This is a, this is a proposed garage on the left side of that house. So this turnaround is here, and then it's pavement between the turnaround and the garage.
But then, are you going to run into headlights because it's up higher with the neighbors that we did on, on Blanchard Farm?
You're not gonna see the headlights.
Why?
Because of the fact this is-
This is not the right plan.
They'll be pulling into the house. The headlights will be facing the front of the, I mean, for a brief moment, they will face the neighbor, but the cars are pulling into the garage. It's a front, front-loaded garage.
I think one of the main, one of the big problems with Blanchard Farm Estates was that what was shown on the plan was different from what was actually built. So I think the, the thing here is to really stay right on top of whatever is, is on the plan. And I think we will try to include a condition that, you know, that talks about, you know, any type of a change having to come back to the planning board.
Because right now, I think the, the garage is probably on the right side of this house, right? That's where you want it. You don't want it all the way on the other side.
No, he's saying it's on the left.
Correct side. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But you know what, again, I understand that-
Couldn't go the other side while they've got the septic system there.
Homeowner is going to go into the driveway and turn into its garage, which is on the front. But if you have company or whatever, and I'm just being a devil's advocate here, somehow, some way, there has to be some type of screening, so that the neighbors, there's, we don't need to hear them after it's built saying, oh my goodness, what happened? A few well-placed shrubs might resolve the issue.
Poison ivy, that'll keep the kids off the slope, too.
There you go.
Any other comments?
So where are we here?
Well, we had some draft conditions, but we've added on about five more. So I think you might wanna-
Wanna continue it?
Yeah.
Try to get everything squared away at once the next time around.
Come up with a wonderful way to figure out how to-
So are we putting screening? Are we putting screening? You had a retaining wall there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll work on pulling that slope back and getting some sort of edge to it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I would say the screening might be more important than the retaining wall, but the big challenge is just making sure that slope doesn't eventually slide into the flooding property. Anything else?
Well, we need a motion to continue, and I'm trying to come up with a good time for you. Now, August 11th is about full. August 25th, you're probably, fairly good chance you might have some flood protection zoning coming up in the fall. If we have that, there's probably, there will have to be a public hearing, and it looks like August 25th is a good date for that. Is that what you have on here?
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, so then we should be able to do it then, right?
So let's regroup here. So we'll have some discussion about some type of new flood protection zoning on August 25th. 25th. You had planned on having a presentation by the chairman of the Historic Commission. I don't know that you really have time to do that right now. It would be a wonderful thing to do, but I just don't know that you really have time to do it, so...
Let's see if we could push that then.
I think we should try to push that, and in the meantime, this could go on at 7:30.
And also, you ditched Old Country Way.
We did ditch that.
And pushed it up to the 11th.
That's right.
So...
Uh, so I think what we're talking about is continuing this to August 25th at 7:30.
All right, I happen to have a motion here. I move to accept the applicant's request that the public hearing for site plan administrative review for lots...
182 to 186.
182, 184, 186. First Parish Road. For site plan administrative review, be continued until August 25th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Selectment's Hearing Room at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Crescent Highway. And continue the time for filing a decision with the Town Court until September 9th, 2016.
And you might want to add in the stormwater permit.
Stormwater, yeah.
And stormwater permit.
Permit.
Okay, and I move to accept the applicant's request that the public hearing for site plan administrative review for the stormwater permit at 82, 182, 184, and 186, First Parish Road be continued until August 25th, 2016, to 7:30 PM in the Selectment's Hearing Room, et cetera, et cetera, Town Court until September 9th, 2016.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. We'll do this sticker duck here, see what we can get done. See how efficient we can be.
This is good check.
Okay, we have, um, wave, wave finding signs?
Don't want to see how government works.
I've been doing a lot of government today. All right, sure. So is this Country Way? Okay, come on up. Well, they're both Country Way. Which Country Way is this?
This is the first one.
Okay.
43-ish.
43-ish.
Uh, it's between 483 and 493.
Okay, tell us what you want to do here.
I have a great, great consulting representative, Brad and Todd Merritt, for the A and R plan. The applicant owns parcels here, and they're looking to subdivide and create, create a lot for his son. Got 130, 123 feet of frontage, 125 feet of lot width, 65,000 square feet performing on. Country Way, as you know, is a town, a public variable width town way, safe neighborhood access.
And a scenic road.
Yep. And a scenic road. We actually permitted scenic roads once for this lot, but now it's being reconfigured.
And is it all upland? The 65,000?
It is. That lot is, yes.
Okay, Laura?
Uh, this plan create, it's actually, there are two applicants. There's Princess Pine Realty Trust, who owns, you know, some of the property here and Mr. Merritt. And it combines several smaller parcels so that one of the parcels has access to Country Way. And out of all of these different parcels, there's one potentially buildable lot, which is Lot 1. And Parcel A is not intended to be buildable because the, there's not enough frontage. So, um, there's really no problem with this plan. It's also, we had a little discussion about whether this was the Egypt Garage. It's not the Egypt Garage. It's up, the Egypt Garage.
That's this lot here, right?
Yeah, it's a couple of lots.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Well, curious, the parcel A, there's the strip of land that does connect it to, to Country Way?
Yep.
And since it's not buildable and there's not enough frontage, I guess why is that stripped there? Just curious, just so that there is some access back to the site, basically?
Yes, yep. There may be future development plans there, but right now, the goal is really to get a lot so it can be built upstairs. It's not some concept, but nothing concrete.
Rule number one, you never give away frontage.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's a good rule. All right, that was my only question.
And there are no stone walls on the Country Way side?
No, no. We, we, we discussed that a year ago, and they had no particular interest in it.
Right.
It was a dilapidated stone wall.
It was, uh...
Yeah, I remember we did this.
We'll, we'll come back, um, the, so...
No, I just, I was just, I didn't see it shown here, but this is the lot line, it's not necessarily the stone wall, right?
Right, no.
Right, okay. All right, I'm good. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to endorse this approval not required, a plan of land, Country Way, situated Mass, prepared by great, uh, the applicant Brad and A and R created 7/11/16 with notation added to the plan that planning board endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to the performance with the zoning regulations, as the division of land is not a subdivision because Lot 1, as shown on the plan, has access and frontage on Country Way, a public way as required by the zoning bylaw. Parcel A is labeled as not a buildable lot as it contains insufficient frontage.
Any second?
All those in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. We have, is the other applicant here? Let's get this one done too then. Okay. Go ahead, Greg.
This is a Form A approval not required subdivision plan of land located at 704 Country Way, owned by Myron Louis Pollak. Existing house located here. Proposing to do is divide the property into two lots. Lot 1 being 30,026 square feet of area, 28,000 of which is upland. Lot 2 being 92,000 square feet, of which 21,500 square feet is upland. This is in the half-acre residential zoning district. Lot 1 has 100 feet of frontage, Lot 2 has 128.91. Both lots comply with the frontage and area requirements for endorsement.
Where's the line go, between the house and the garage?
Correct.
Why are they doing this? What was the, is there a purpose to this? They build in, is this another buildable lot?
The purpose would be to eventually build on Lot 2.
Do they have a plan how they're going to address the lot with Lot 2?
Yeah, it's going to be a proposed plan.
Anything else? Any questions? Okay.
I move to endorse this approval not required, a plan of land in situated Mass showing a division of parcels 20-4-4 and 20-4-5, 704 Country Way, prepared by Morse Engineering Company, Inc. for the applicant Ann Vignani, dated 7/21/16 with the notation added to the plan. Planning board endorsement of this plan is not a determination as to conform with the performance with the zoning regulations, as the division of land is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has access and frontage on Country Way, a public way as required by the zoning bylaw.
Second?
All those in favor?
Thank you.
It is?
It is, yes.
Okay, we'll deal, we'll deal.
Okay. What we got left here? How about the signs?
How about those signs? So...
Where are we with those?
Here are, here's the graphic of the signs.
Now, did they modify the font?
No.
Or the, no, that's a font, the kernling.
The kerning.
Kerning, kernling, I don't know, whatever, you know, you know what I meant.
They did. There's again some kind of issue with the letters and the issues that the Design Review Committee had were, they, they liked the blue, they liked that sometimes this is used in the reverse so that the blue areas are white and the white areas are blue, they like that. And what they didn't like, they weren't 100% crazy about the dory, but the dory is really kind of an essential part of the design. I think the EDC agrees. It's also been trademarked and copyrighted with the dory and the lighthouse and these words. So if you take out the dory, you really have to apply for copyright, and I don't think anyone wants to take out the dory. So the only other thing is that if you look at this lighthouse, you, it's like a very...
It looks like the tower, it's like the Leaning Tower of Pisa.
It's very slightly off. I think everyone noticed it. Everyone thought it was part of Mark Faberman's design, and that there wasn't a problem with it. Design Review was really, really concerned about that particular facet of this. They want it, you know, straight. So that's the other issue that they have.
Wasn't there, John also mentioned that he felt the lighthouse was coming out of the dory or something, or did they...
Well, they talked about that. They had a couple of hours of kind of intense conversation. By the end of it, that didn't seem to need to be as big an issue, and they didn't mention it in their, their memo. So I have two motions prepared for you. One is just to approve it the way it stands exactly. The second one is to approve it, and I kind of bulleted the things that I just mentioned, except for the fact of eliminating the dory, which I think is a lot of the things to do.
I was at that meeting, and basically, the Selectmen had approved this along with the EDC, along with the Town Administrator. And then, in the 11th hour, someone came forward and decided, first of all, they didn't like the color. And then, there was another email that went around from, who was that?
Marie Flaherty.
But there was another one.
Oh, Robert Bollew.
And, you know, it's, when you get a group of artists together, some are going to agree, some are going to disagree. It's like herding cats trying to get something together. This is, we worked on this. As a matter of fact, I think I presented it to you at one point. So no one was unaware of this. And under the old meeting law, everything is open. It was all posted. We've been working on this for over 15 months. So I think that under the circumstances, unless you are really staring at this as opposed to going by it quickly, which is what you will be doing, I don't think you're going to notice that it's a little off the filter.
I certainly notice it now.
Well, I think it's also part of the, to me, it's kind of the perspective though. Because, you know, when you look at things in perspective, you're looking at them at a sort of an angle. And so, to me, you know, you're down below, you're looking up at this, and so that therefore it's not necessarily straight. I was more concerned just about the kerning and making sure that we got that correct. Because I thought that was a valid point that was made, that if the, what the, the kerning wasn't correct. But I guess that's been addressed?
Yes.
Okay. Then I, I don't have any issues with this at all. I love the color. I love the dory. It's like a new movie, Finding Dory.
Skewed lighthouse.
Slightly skewed lighthouse.
Well, it's...
What do we have for a motion?
Yes.
I mean, I'm...
Which motion do you want?
I want a vote, I want a motion that says, I'm going to vote what they approve.
I move to approve the proposed design of wayfinding signs by Mark Faberman.
Last second then.
So, before we, can we discuss for a second here? What was the, what was the other? I mean, that seems, that seems fairly, um, fairly short, I guess. What were you proposing as kind of, I, I'm not sure I followed that. If they've already addressed the issues, is there anything to list as a condition?
Well, he, he hasn't addressed anything except the kerning, the font kerning. So the other ones, some of this is just kind of, um, the, the only thing that's really significant is that the image of the lighthouse be straightened to as near vertical as possible. That's the only real condition in here. The others are just kind of repeating stuff that they said, just to be consistent with what they said. I mean, they seem to be feeling like they're not heard, but that's another subject.
Well, I think that, as we discussed, maybe we didn't all discuss earlier, that the Design Review Board's making recommendations to the Planning Board. All right, so at the end of the day, it's sort of our decision.
Yeah.
If all this has been presented to those who are designing this stuff, and they're all happy with it, then I guess I can go along with that.
Well, I think if you, if you really think that the lighthouse would look better straightened, this is the opportunity to weigh in on that. If you don't think it's really going to make that much difference...
You know what? That's, that's going to be my issue, and somebody's saying it looks better without a dory, right? I mean, at, at the end of the day, I'm probably the last artist to look at this thing. I'm the non-artist looking at this thing. But I, that, you know, somebody's pointed out, it does look skewed.
Only because somebody pointed it out.
I don't know, I might have, if somebody just laid it on the table, I might have said the same thing. I'm an engineer, so, you know...
But again, in my mind...
My eye goes to straight lines and verticals and all that kind of stuff.
My first thought was that it's the perspective that's doing that. Not the, not that it's not straight, it's a, you know, it's sort of a perspective view.
You have to look at it from a distance, and not at the end of your eye.
That's a pretty good distance.
It looks really kind of crooked from that camp.
I'm fine, well, I'm not going to be the last artist weighing in on it, so...
It's the kind of running too, where you, you don't want it perfect. I mean, there's not many straight lines in it, to be honest.
Yeah.
And from, when Anne held it up, it actually looked better to me than it does right now. From a distance, from what, 10 feet?
From a distance, yes.
Yeah. I, I think it's fine. I don't think it's going to look better as if they straightened it out, to be honest. That's my opinion, just one man's voice.
Well, and I also think there's a little bit of a visual, playing tricks with your eye, because this is so white, and this part of it, it's blue, so again, it has that, that sort of skewed effect. But, I don't know, I think it's...
First time they printed five hundred of these things, they just moved it ever so slightly, they'd have left, you'd never know.
Again, I'll reiterate, I was mostly concerned about the, the font, and the spacing of the letters, to make sure that that was corrected, but the, the design of it, I think, is still quite nice, very, very nice. I do respect the design review's opinions, but I do think, as Steve said, you could probably get ten artists together, and they'd all have different opinions.
Oh, yeah, this would never end if we do that.
It's been going on.
I, I think the important part is that the design review committee has provided recommendations, they've gone to those who are controlling this design, it's not the design review committee.
Yes.
They've taken the input, they've made adjustments where they felt appropriate, made, made some decisions where they felt it wasn't necessarily something they wanted to change, and so we're at where we are, we've provided the professional input, and, and the question is, can we live with it the way it is? I guess I'm, I'm okay with it.
There is actually a little section of the zoning bylaw that says for public buildings and certain other things, the planning board is supposed to weigh in on the signs, so.
Well, that's, that's what I'm doing.
So, okay, well, I, I was just saying, as a whole board, if you want to take a vote, it's probably a good thing.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree with that, yeah.
Right.
We were just discussing.
Okay.
Okay, all right, a motion on the table is, just to repeat.
I move to approve the proposed design of wayfinding signs by Mark Faberman.
Okay, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Anne's probably going to kill me too, but I was thinking, at some point, when we ever have our Situate gay pride, this can be, this can say, "Situate isn't straight." Ooh! I'm sorry, that's on TV, it's terrible. Bad puns.
Okay. What do you got?
Well, I, I have, I do have something, but if you have something.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so, we're going to be getting an application of some form for the dog park. We've all heard about the dog park, we've all seen places to sign your name to support the dog park. It's going in front of, do you know where Go Green is? The hill in front of the, um, the wastewater plant that has this, you know, sort of massive landscape, you know, recycling type.
Mulch, the Mulch Mountain?
All the organic waste goes, yeah.
Yeah, where all the organic. Catches fire, period water plant.
Yep.
Catches fire, so, in front of that, and I think slightly west of that is some land where a dog park is, is being proposed.
Down in the valley?
Not all the way in the valley, I don't think.
So they got to go past the, towards the wastewater treatment plant, that's where the dog park's going?
Coming from, um, coming from the rotary, it's before you get to the driveway into the wastewater treatment.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, there's a lot, I mean, there's trees there.
Near where the, where the wind turbine is, yeah?
Yeah, right near there.
Yeah.
So, they do need some type of site plan approval, because there's something on the order of a thirty-car parking lot that's going in with this. I was wondering if you might want to consider if they come in for a site plan waiver? In the past, this was done fairly frequently, there's no building there, it's just a parking lot and a dog park. There's going to be probably a similar application coming in for the Beaver Dam Road softball field, they want a bigger parking lot, and that's going to be, again, about a, you know, thirty, forty-car parking lot.
Is a stormwater permit?
It probably will, yeah, it probably will. But, in any case, whether you want to have them come in for the site plan, just as a site plan review, the good thing about getting a site plan of some kind is that where you don't exactly know where these things are going, and there are a lot of other features out there, like the bike trail that goes by on a driftway, there's the driveway into Go Green that kind of circles back from the driftway, you want to make sure that this is in a flat place, and see what else is around it, how is it going to relate to all of that.
Is this a town property?
It's town property, um, there's a petition which is going to go to town meeting for CPC funds, and also, you know, they've got to get the selectmen's approval for the use of the land, and they've got to get town meetings approval for the use of the land, but I imagine there are plenty of dog owners, and this won't be hard for them to do.
So.
So the question is, can it go as, you know, technically, it should be a major site plan review with hearings and all of this, um, which is going to add to the time that it's going to take to process it, it's going to add to the cost, um, we don't have a budget for their ad, they don't have a budget for their legal ad, um, can we flex a little and maybe do it as a site plan waiver, where it's really, where it's not a building? I mean, I'm just asking what you think about it.
What is the, what does a site plan waiver entail?
Well, um, the planning board's always done.
Are we going to see a plan?
Oh, a, a surveyed plan.
And are we going to see what is proposed to be installed, if anything?
I think you're going to see everything that you would see with a site plan, it, it just won't have the legal ad, and it won't have quite the length of time, you know, to process it, because of having to run the legal ad and all of that.
As long as they show exactly the layout and the entrance and the site plans, I don't have a problem.
Parking? Yeah.
And the parking, and the stormwater, if we need to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Well, maybe they can do a gravel parking lot, I, I don't know.
Even that becomes not fully previous, right?
Yeah, it's under it, yeah, you're right. And where's the playground? The playground, I also had been pushing to have come in to the planning board, and I haven't heard anything, I've had a lot of pushback on that, lot of pushback, and, um.
Because.
Is that the one in North City?
Because they felt that it was, that this was the only town where they ever had a playground reviewed, and, you know, all kinds of.
Reviewed every playground we put in.
Yeah, I know, you reviewed, reviewed that purple dinosaur.
Right.
Yeah, so. Look, I think they have to come in, this is an interesting structure, it is a structure with all of those bits. Yeah. And the parking, and all the rest of it, and at one, one point, part of the design was a zip line, I mean, really. I think they're taking out the zip line. They should, but even so, I think it's, it's really.
Cross to the train.
At any rate, I think they should come in. I think we, we may need a letter, um, to them, to the proponents, saying that, you know, yes, you do need to come in, we're looking forward to seeing your plans, but yes, you need to come in.
If we've already established the precedent and done it before, I would say, let's, let's do this one, can't take that much work, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they've already, they're working up a plan, right?
Yeah, we just want to see it.
Want to see the traffic that's coming in and out, we want to see all the various elements, right, the parking, the stormwater?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
So, I think we're agreeable to that.
Good.
You want to draft up something?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, can we blow through all the rest of this in five minutes?
Yeah.
What do we have?
Move to pay all the bills. Anne approved the minutes.
Oh, it's, that's a thin folder, that's good.
It's only one thing in it. Moved to pay, um, Wellby Builders LLC fifty-four dollars and ninety-four cents as a refund from engineering services for lots eight through seven Blanchard Farm Lane.
Where are you signing?
Yeah, oh, just sign it down below, it's a.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes?
Move the minutes of July fourteenth, twenty sixteen.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done. Liaison reports. Town planner report. One, one comment I should make is, um, Laura and I met with Kevin Cafferty and Rick.
Mosca.
Mosca, of the DPW, to get a, kind of an overview of, um, the town's wastewater treatment system, and I, it was quite interesting, I have a bunch of notes, I'll actually try to reduce them to a piece of paper and send them around to you, so, it gives you kind of a sense of where we are with respect to wastewater treatment, well, we're right up against the limit is where we are, um, but, um, the, the second part of that was that they offered to give us a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, and so, if you're interested.
I would love that, I've been, we, we've talked about that before, I think Al Banger didn't even mention it at one point, so.
So.
Remembered none?
I don't know.
It's not someplace I normally hang out, believe it or not.
It's very interesting.
So Laura, you want to just see if you could coordinate it? Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion anywhere?
I just seconded Bob's motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.